Meeting of the Willet City Council for January 22 to order today. And first, I pledge the flag. Larry, can you lead us in the flag?
Please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated.
Roll call, Kathy.
Councilmember Condon.
President.
Robert.
President.
Strong.
Mayor.
Yes.
American vote.
Here. All right. So, folks, public communication. Council welcomes participation in its meetings. Comments should be limited to three minutes per person so that everyone may be given an opportunity to be heard. Text but I matters and avoid repetition whenever any group. Whenever any group of persons wishes to address the council on the same subject matter, the mayor may request that the spokesperson be chosen by the group. This item is limited to matters under the jurisdiction of the city council which are not on the posted agenda. Public criticism of the city council, commission, boards, and agencies will not be prohibited. However, no action will be taken since they're not agendized. So, I'm assuming folks are mostly here for our goal-setting and will have an opportunity at that point to comment. So, but again, at this point, if there's anybody from the public that would like to come up and speak, now's your time.
Can you clarify that they're going to have another topic?
I'd like to see. If you could state your name first, sir.
Michael Burgess.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to see the city consider installing or having a local merchant install a Tesla supercharging station which can recharge the Tesla cars in about half an hour to an hour as opposed to the charging station that's behind the old dry cleaner site that takes several hours to charge a car, which is great for local residents that are already here for a while. But seeing a high-speed charger come in that people can actually stop in for lunch on their trip and do some window shopping while they're getting their car charged and then continue on, beneficial, I think.
Right. And again, I want to clarify if what you want to talk about is part of our goals, we're going to give an opportunity to talk during that. But if it's something not on there, then, so I just wanted to clarify that again.
Yeah, I didn't know it was on the goals.
No, that's fine. I just want to make sure of that. All right, you folks.
Thank you.
Anybody else would like to welcome to speak?
Hi, Ruth Valenzuela, District Director for Assemblymember Jim Wood. And I'm here to talk about the most unpopular thing right now is the Dynamex decision in AB-5. So, I wanted to start out just by saying, this is a really, really positive, good thing for the state of California. The Dynamex decision was a Supreme Court ruling that said, we're going to, there are three criteria. If you meet these three criteria, you can be an independent contractor. If people don't meet these three criteria, they are not allowed to be independent contractors. And what that did was allowed for hundreds and thousands, thousands and thousands and thousands of people throughout the state of California who are being abused by corporations who are forcing them to be independent contractors, to force these companies into hiring them as real employees. So, they get things that we all take advantage, take for granted, things like unemployment insurance, workers' compensation, minimum wage guarantees, paid sick leave, paid family leave. So, this, it's not just Uber, it's not just Lyft. There are companies all over the place that are using, more and more using this to skirt employment laws and to make more money on the backs of workers. So, to start with that, it was a Supreme Court ruling. So, when this happened in the state of California in the spring of 2018, the state kind of went, okay, this is great, this is going to solve a lot of problems, but we have a lot of people who are niche worker, you know, workers all over the place who are independent contractors working really niche little unbelievable, I can't believe the things people do. I've heard so many stories since this passed. This isn't going to work for all of them. We have to come up with some exemptions. So, AB-5 was introduced, and all AB-5 is, is exemptions to this Supreme Court ruling. So, there are exemptions for certain industries. There's, this is where the cap for freelance riders came in. It's a partial exemption for freelance riders. There are a myriad of other types of kind of interesting little exemptions in there. But the really important one is called the business-to-business exemption, or exception, business-to-business exception. What it allows is for somebody who's right now working as an independent contractor to go out and get a business license for $40 a year from the county, hang their shingle and say, I am now a sole proprietor. I am now, you know, whatever it is, I'm Ruth's bookkeeping, and I do bookkeeping, and I'm going to do bookkeeping for these people. I'm a sole proprietor, I'm no longer your independent contractor, you're going to employ me, sorry, you're going to employ me as a company. I am a company that you're employing. This is available to people. There are these eleven criteria that have to be met, and really, the more people I talk to, the more I understand these criteria. The more people understand them, the more we're hearing, oh, my God, I can do this, this is doable for me. So, I'm just here to say, we're, Emily Teckio is here, she's our field representative for Mendocino County. Our door's open, we talk about this all day long, our phone is ringing, you know. We aren't lawyers, we don't know the answers to everything, but we're happy to share whatever we know and to hear.
Ruth, I would welcome, because this is kind of an interest to a lot of our folks, in fact, our newspaper's struggling with this. I would welcome if you did some sort of presentation if you're in the Willets area that maybe get the word out and if there are some exemptions for some of these businesses, I'd love to hear.
Yeah.
And obviously, we've got a full agenda today.
Yeah, you guys are real busy today.
But I would welcome if there's something you could put together. I think we would help facilitate.
I'd love to work with the chamber.
I think the chamber probably would love to work with you.
Because we don't share.
So, Ron Morehead's back there, I'm sure you can.
Yeah, I would love to do that. We can kind of work on, yeah.
Yeah, because this has come up a lot in this.
Yeah, and just a real, just really quickly, Willet's weekly, we're all hearing about it. We understand the 35 cap is not working for some of the smaller papers. Assemblymember Wood's very vocal about it, and we're assuming that others are too. So, we're hoping that a solution is found for that.
Okay.
All right. Thanks.
Thanks, Ruth.
Thank you.
Ellen Grossman. I'm here with a group of citizens to ask the city to improve our skate park. I'm sorry, can't hear me? Okay, full deference to a tight budget.
So, Ellen?
Yes?
I think, I've kind of explained, we're setting goals, but if this is just a quick blur versus.
This is just a quick blur, which I thought other members had requested that I do in public comment. You're the mayor, you tell.
Well, I think we're going to have a spot for that. If this is regarding setting goals regarding recreation facilities or whatever, then I think it's more appropriate there versus if you just.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. We'll be back up shortly.
Yes.
And then I'll be ready with my pad and pen to write down things.
My name is Barbara Plaza, and you very well know who I am, Jerry Gonzalez, member on the committee. I've been struggling here for five years to get some resolve within the police department concerning certain activities that's been going on at my neighbor, Bill Schaefer at 151 Franklin. The right to privacy is no longer anything we can actually lay hands on because the right to privacy is something that certain individuals within the police department have covered up for quite some time. You, Jerry Gonzalez, know Mr. Schaefer since the '60s. You wouldn't ask him to take down the cameras watching me. I put cardboards over my paper, over my windows on my bedroom to keep him from watching me. You should have done something when you were chief. He tells everybody that he's been a reserve since '69 for a couple of years, which now our new chief has found out that he lied to him too. Now, discovery needs to be resolved by giving evidence to the DA, which is investigating this here. The right to my privacy has been violated for five years. You can laugh at it or whatever you want, but it is me. Discovery needs to be resolved in a quick manner of a letter sent to the DA who's investigating Mr. Schaefer, retired reserve, since 1971. The protection of a reserve shouldn't be there. The protection of the community should be there at all at first. You shouldn't protect a Willet's Reserve police officer from the past who is doing criminal charges, criminal activity against me. It is a violation of the California Penal Code 632 to the right to privacy. If you had your wife being watched by a man for ungodly reasons, you would have had a stop put to it. Every one of you on the board would have had a stop to it five years ago when it was addressed to. I never got no resolve for it. But you, chief, but you, mayor, now that you have come to the knowledge of you being his friend of Bill Schaefer's, yes, you have, you admitted to me in the grocery store here in town that you've been his friend with his son since the '60s. You can deny it all you want. You're a corrupt man, and you should not be a mayor in our city.
Okay, would anybody else like to come speak? Okay. I guess at this point, we'll move to.
Hi, I'm Paul Hosford. I'd like to talk about the ambulance situation in our county and the Board of Supervisors meeting yesterday. We were very pleased with what happened at this Board of Supervisors meeting yesterday. The language that went on was, I thought, excellent. It went on for two hours and 20 minutes. We had people from different communities come in, fire people, ambulance people, people from the city, the city managers. I saw Suprema there. But what I would like to do is, and I'm, as I've said before when I came and talked, I would like not to point fingers at anyone or cause blame or make anyone upset by my comments, but I would ask for help from Willet City to join in with the voice at the supervisors' meetings in regards to the ambulance services. I think it's going pretty well, but you, all of you people up here are very powerful, and with your voices, it would help our need for the Hosford family and our community to make things happen. There are going to be things that happen that we're going to be asking, or the supervisor's going to be asking for more money from our people, from our community. And if the voices aren't out there asking, it won't happen. I think things are going pretty well right now, but I would really like to have Willet's part of that voice, of which I haven't seen yet, and I would really appreciate it if that could happen. So, thank you for your time.
Hello, Andrew Hosford, Paul's son. Couple of things I wanted to say. Thank you to you guys for everything that you do. In the public sector, it's pretty difficult to, you have to deal with everything that you guys deal with. So, keep doing it because we need your guys' representation. I've been interacting with the city on a number of different projects, and I wanted to kind of give gratitude to those interactions as well. I think that your city staff is wonderful, and you have a good group of people, you know, trying to make Willet's a better place, and they try to be very, very helpful, very hands-on, encouraging, bringing up new ideas, that type of thing, so that's pretty appreciated. I'm here to talk about the supervisors' meeting as well. I want to point out, one of the, I think, poignant moments for me is the owner of Medstar, which is the ambulance provider for the county up the 101 corridor, which it seems to be that's the biggest concern and the biggest issue, pointed out that Willet's ambulance service is essentially subsidized by the city of Ukiah and the population at Ukiah. So, Willet's doesn't have enough population, doesn't have enough monies generated by just general ambulance service, EMS service, 911 calls, interfacility transports, to facilitate warranting operating an ambulance service in Willet's, which I think is a concern of the city of Willet's. It's a concern of the population in the Willet's and the surrounding areas. Obviously, Covalo is on the top of the list for that because it takes such significant resources to do a transport from the Covalo area down here, but Willet's is certainly on that list as the, as one of the top factors that is affecting that. It sounds like there's going to need to be some funds, and it sounds like the short-term fix may be some money from the general fund to subsidize additional ambulance services up to 101 corridor so we don't end up in these situations where we have longstanding staffing levels less than Level 2. When we're at Level 2, that means there's no interfacility transport to get people the emergency care that they need at a different hospital with specialty care. So, how do we, how do we, where does that money come from? Well, that comes from the county, first off. There, it's essentially, we're going to say it's their responsibility, although it's not technically, it is, it's the, they oversee a board of, or a group that it's their responsibility, but the county has huge influence, and so need to generate funds with that. It's going to, it's going to sound like that really the only way to get it done is a new tax. And so, that's something that I hope that you guys take seriously and look at it, potentially a sales tax or something. And I'm not pro taxation, I'm not pro government regulation or whatever, but I am pro taking care of our community. That's what government is for, and so we're going to ask you guys to help out with that at some point. So, thanks.
Anybody else on something down on the agenda?
Hi, my name's Diana Hosford. My husband Paul and Andrew's been speaking. I'm sure as a lot of you know that my mom was a casualty of the EMS system or the transport that we had. When it started out, I felt like when we went to meetings, nobody was pulling together. Now, I feel like after yesterday's meeting, people are pulling together. People are understanding what's going on. Thank you, Suprema, for being there. But what I'm asking is the city board get involved with it too. There's a lot more, seems like committees are being formed, meetings that are happening, and I'd like to see if somebody from here could really be involved with it. I think it's really an important thing for our community, and we need all be aware of it. We really need to make sure that it doesn't happen to anybody else, what happened to our family. And I think it's going to need the community pulling together and you guys being part of that. So, I'm really asking you to be part of what's going on, be part of the meetings that are going on in Ukiah, be there for the city of Willet's.
Can I say something?
Yeah, she was here yesterday.
I just wanted to say, I have listened to you the times that your whole family has been here, and I really appreciate that you are keeping this issue at the forefront of everyone's minds.
Yeah.
I did write a letter to Supervisor Haskjack and was amazed, but I got an immediate response. It doesn't usually happen.
He's been really good.
He's been really good, and I was, I was very adamant in telling him that this is, this is a critical issue for our community and that it has created a great amount of dis-ease here, that we're worried. We don't feel that we have the backup that we need when we most need it.
Right.
And I wanted to make sure that he knew that, as a private citizen, because I can't speak for the whole council.
Correct.
That I want this to stay at the top of the list.
And needs to, people need to be aware. It's so serious, and until it affects you or your family, you're not going to understand. But when you sit there and watch this happening and things not happening, it's terrible. It's absolutely horrible. So, that's why we're just, as a Hosford family and for the community, we need to get involved in it.
I appreciate it.
Whatever you need to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak?
First of all, I am glad that I was able to be there at the supervisors' meeting, but I want to make sure that I acknowledge and show appreciation for Greta. She made sure that she reached out to me and let me know that it was on the agenda, and I know that we both share, we both share your concerns, and as private citizens, we wanted to make sure that the community knew as leaders, even though we can't represent the council, but as leaders that we were there and that we're listening and that we care. My hope is that the council will have a discussion and come to some consensus and that we're going to, that we're going to support at least, let the county know that we stand together in supporting the work toward a comprehensive plan. And it seems like we've kind of stood back quietly, and what I'm hearing from the community is that council needs to, as a collective group, say, yes, this is important. So, I would encourage council to do that, and thank you again, Greta, for stepping up as a leader in the community and letting people know.
Can I just ask one question? I know you work together as a council, many members, but can you, is there other people in the community in your city of Willet's that need to get involved besides you guys as a council member? Does the city planner need to get involved, the city manager, what needs to happen to get this going?
Well, I think that, I think it's everybody's intent. I know I've talked with Larry. I actually, I had a prior commitment, so I couldn't be there, and I didn't reach out. I got the impression from Greta that both she and Suprema were going to be at a meeting, and I didn't realize it was going to be that late in the afternoon, but, so I didn't reach out to you, I wanted you to attend there, so I apologize for that.
It just seems like people are pulling together, the city department, Board of Supervisors, it's like they're finally working together to say, this is a serious problem, and we need to go, we need to figure out what we need to do.
And again, we've communicated with the county, and again, on prior occasion, that, you know, we want to be involved in the dialogue, and so.
I believe our staff, city manager, is in communication.
There's a lot of meetings, and Jen Banks committed to doing a lot of stuff, they're working together.
So. We can't really have a discussion right now about it.
What I can ask is that when it appears that there's some timely recommendation to be made, that we could agendize that at a future time if there's a proposal or even more information. We did have a very nice presentation from Chris.
He's awesome.
So, we've done that already, but I think it's up to the city manager to determine when it's ripe to put on the agenda.
And certainly, the council can direct me to put it on the agenda, but I do want to let you know that we have been involved in meetings and some phone calls, and one of the things that's happening right now is a study done by the city of Ukiah. And that's a really important study, and so we're really waiting on the results of that before the city becomes involved because it will shake down what the costs really are and on a detailed analysis of it, because right now there is some discrepancies on where exactly those costs are and where they lay, and we wanted to have an independent study done, and so the Ukiah has taken that on to do that study, and I think that's important information. And that was the status of our last phone call as a group. Another thing that happened during that conference call, it was, and I'm actually going to talk about that a little bit in the, when we get into our main presentation, the county and various other political entities have a variety of ways to raise money. The city has based as only one, and so we are extremely limited in the way we can raise funds, and so there's a very limited, and you can see what I'm, why I'm going to bring up some money about our sales tax. That's really all we have. There are other opportunities once the study is done to see what the critical needs are because there are a lot of moving pieces in this. It's not something that people just want to throw money at, and so, and it's important that we not just do that. And so, I know that there's also parcel taxes, there are other ways, because some of the talks about sales tax actually have an impact on the city itself, and we need to analyze that, we need to look at that, and I think that's important for us to analyze as a council. But we do have some studies out there that we want to see, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like, Chris?
Mayor, council, talking with Paul there, I want to say that there is a big meeting coming up, and I'll distribute this via email to everyone. It's the Mendocino County Emergency Medical Care Committee, we call it the EMCC Committee. That's Thursday, and public comment is at 3:20.
Tomorrow?
It's not at the start of the meeting, it's at the end.
Tomorrow?
Yeah, tomorrow. Sorry, I've been sick, I'm lost in time a little bit, but there is a meeting for that.
Where is it?
It's at the Public Health Conference Room on Dora, 1120 South Dora, Room 1. It's right when you walk out the door, to the left.
I am committed. Tomorrow, is anybody here interested in?
But I'll distribute, actually, I'll send the email out tonight.
I have a tax appointment in Ukiah, so I'd be there, but I don't remember the timing, so, okay. 3:40 or 3?
3:20 is when public comment.
Oh, 3:20, okay.
We're going to have the afternoon start, we're going to talk about it, so 1 o'clock.
Okay. Yeah, get us an email.
All right. Anybody else like to speak to something not on the agenda? Okay. So, Stephanie, I'll let you start, and then you can walk us through.
I will walk? There's a mission. Okay. I thank you all for coming here tonight. I'm Stephanie Gerbransera, I'm the city manager for the city of Willet's. On the front table, we have our key staff members, our senior staff, minus our finance director who is at a conference, but I think we've got a full house in terms of, you know, we have a very, very small staff. The city of Willet's is, as you know, a city of approximately 5,000 people. City staff are pretty much here. We have a police department and water department that make up the bulk and public works and make up the bulk of the rest of the staff. But to the extent that we talk about goals or things that get done, it's the folks at this table, and I welcome you and thank you for coming. I hear, you know, everybody wants more in their community, and I'm one of those people. I live here too, in the community, but we, and we say, hey, we pay a lot of taxes, where are our taxes buying for us? And I, and I have stopped to think about this many times, and I think, you know, a lot of people, I think, local government taxes are mysterious. We know we pay money to the feds, and we know we pay money to the state, it comes out of our paychecks, and we pay it, when we're small business people, we have to pay, but where do local taxes come from? And I think, I think that's mysterious because most people don't know. Unless you're, you know, working on a budget up here, you don't know. So, I wanted to sort of break that down, is how is the city of Willet's get its money to do all these projects? And I think it was a good starting point to do that. It's not in the packet, but it's going to be up here, and I'm just going to go over just a few slides. I only have four slides because a long PowerPoint is not my intention, but this sort of breaks down the major taxes that come to the city of Willet's.
Can you see behind me, folks? Okay.
Okay. And so, we have property taxes, and you can see how much we have gotten in property taxes for the last five years, and those are a sliver of what people who have homes or businesses in Willet's, we get about 11% of the property tax, and that's what that equals out to. The rest of the property tax that you pay as city residents goes to the county, and it also, there's a little teeny tiny sliver that goes to the fire department, and that sliver's not nearly big enough, and there's also a sliver that goes to the school district. But the city sliver is very, very small. Sales and use tax, that is our sales tax, and that's what you pay when you buy non-food items, and I would say that is, a lot of those are paid by people who don't live in the city of Willet's. That is our biggest income stream, and in another slide, I'll show you how much of that we get.
Oh, that's what I was going to say. That's not all of the sales tax.
Yeah, that's all it says. That's the little portion that the city gets. Their business licenses, there's an occupancy tax that goes to our hotels, and approximately 11% goes to the Chamber of Commerce. We have a franchise tax, that's paid mostly by PG&E and Verizon, those kinds of entities.
Did PG&E, I thought they didn't pay us this year because?
No, PG&E pays us, it's Sonoma Clean Power that doesn't pass.
Oh, okay.
And we have a real estate transfer tax, that is when you sell your house, there's a little extra tax in there that goes to the city. Vehicle license fees is when you buy a car and you register your vehicle, if you live in Willet's, it doesn't matter where you buy the car, that money goes to us. That's great. And then there's some miscellaneous taxes that, a little bit here and there. I want to scroll. Okay. So, we have, and that just sort of shows it on the pie chart, same sort of. So we have, and that just sort of shows it on the pie chart, same sort of thing. Sales tax. Wait, I'm going to actually, this is hard.
The arrow key on the keyboard, if it's easy.
Yeah. It's a word. I have to get back to it. Sorry. I'm used to a clicker. Okay. Just look at that first. Okay, that's what I wanted.
Which one?
Let's do that. Okay. Sales taxes, so this is our biggest chunk of tax. And the base sales tax rate in California is 7.25%. And then the state pays 6%. And a little more than 2%, about 2% or 3% of that, I think it's more like 3% actually, goes to the county. The county gets that. City only gets 1%. County gets more than that. County transportation gets 0.25%, and we've also got Measure B. And that is the county, oh, the county transportation is 25%. Then there's a special sales tax on top of the 7.25%. And Wilk has 0.5% that goes straight to, that goes for your roads, and it's a special roads tax. Ukiah has this 1% special tax. They get a whole half cent more than we do because they went to the voters and asked for more. Fort Bragg also went to the voters and asked for more. They're going to be asking for another half cent, a 3.2 cent or a half cent, in the next general election. Lakeport gets a full 1.5% more, so it's a full 1% more in sales tax than Willet's does. The county gets 0.5 for mental health and 1.25% for the library. So that's how, that's how it breaks down. Now, the sales tax is the only income that, that's the only dial we have in terms of raising money. That's it. And so I just wanted folks to know that. In terms of your federal income taxes, your state income taxes, that doesn't come to us. That's for your state and local, state and federal government. And I just, it's a good sort of primer on how a city gets funded and how we do what we do. And, let's see. And also, one thing to also remember, a sales tax is, there is a cap. So you can only ask for so much more sales tax from the voters. Right now, the city of Willets has 0.7% left that it could ask for for a special tax. If the county asks for a tax, then the city of Willets is limited by that amount. And so our absolute cap is 0.7 if we were to ask for more taxes. In a few, during our budget presentation and a few financial presentations we had a few months ago, I don't know if, whether you've seen our budget, but it is online. The city of Willets currently operates at approximately a half a million dollar deficit because we have lost sales tax due to various forces. Amazon, I think it's probably the biggest thing, Amazon and the bypass and whatnot. We have lost considerable revenue, and we are now at a half a million dollar deficit. And we are trying to figure out ways to deal with that. We have cut our budget, our expenditures in the last budget considerably. And our staff is trying, tries, at the hardest they can. We are currently, by far, the lowest paid workforce in the county. And so I just wanted to preface that. Discussion of that. And so, anyway, that's broken down a little bit. But those are the, those are the main things I wanted to highlight before we get into our discussion. Because again, local taxes are mystery. They don't teach you that in civics class. So in our goal setting, and the last time we did this was May in 2018, and we had not done it for about three years, when we did it in May of 2018. And staff had been already working on a list of projects and goals. And we sat down and counsel, and we made some lists. And those lists are on this wall. And you can also find them in the agenda that is on the table over there. If you want to not look at the wall, you can actually see it and have it right in front of you, which is we want you to do. And these various lists consisted of things we're already working on, things that staff saw as priorities for the next couple, next two years that really needed to be addressed because there were critical infrastructure issues. And then there were some lists of things that, hey, what does council want to do? And then there was, over here, these four charts right here are things that came up in the last year and a half that needed to be done, whether it came from the outside, requirements, or people came with staff reports and, or requests. Anyway, these got added to our list. So these all got worked on. The list of things to be prioritized was a small list, and they were just sort of pie in the sky things, like, that we threw out there. With the understanding that with such a tiny staff, we probably wouldn't be able to get to maybe any of those, but we would try. We had some short-term and long-term things, and they were just really nice things to think about. So over the course of a year and a half, you'll see the progress that's been made on all those things. The green signifies that those things were pretty much done. There are some I forgot to color because keeping track of all this was hard, and I apologize. But I can go over them if anyone has questions. The yellow things are in progress, that usually those are long-term goals that are still in progress, and we weren't able to complete them, but we're working on them. And those are really good to see, and I kind of wanted to go through some of those. We have quite a few ADA things to accomplish. The city was not ADA compliant. We did a number of improvements to City Hall. We added an entire bathroom. We added lots of things for the doors. All those stuff's really expensive. We're always watchful for potential improvements. On North Maple Street, when we did that project, we put in ramps. Pine Street included four ramps and 200 feet of sidewalk. We made the sidewalk of Mill Creek continuous. Vacancy ordinance, this was really high on the council's agenda, and it's still in progress. We have not been able to complete that, although we did pass the vacancy ordinance. And again, it's in progress, we're still working on it. We have a watershed maintenance and reseeding. We had a project where we planted 80,000 trees in our watershed, and we finished that project. That was a great project. As of now, there's, we have a 75% survival rate of those trees that were planted, and this was after the firestorm. The fire happened, and we lost so many trees in the watershed.
Stephanie, do you think as you go through this, you could point out which are general fund and which are...
Sure, that's, I can absolutely do that.
That way, maybe people get an idea of what's paying.
I can absolutely do that. All the ADA issues were general fund. That had to come out of the general fund. And just to explain, general fund are things that are not paid for by paying your water bill and paying your sewer bill. Those are things that come from the sales, the sales taxes. Things that are, when the trees were planted, that came from our water fund because it is in the watershed, which is owned by our water department, and it goes to nourish our water supply to keep our water clean. And that's why it's a pristine area that we keep set aside for that, yes.
Are we gonna, are you going to summarize every item on all 19?
I'm gonna, I should, I'm going to try not to, Suprema, I'm sorry. I just kind of want to go through a few things.
No, I just noticed you're starting to go into detail, and I'm wondering, that could take a while.
You're absolutely right. I'm trying to spin through some of these. I'll let you go through these on yourself, but yourself, I know that we had a bunch of trees at the airport that needed cutting. We've done a tremendous job with that, with a lot of grant funds and a lot of volunteer funds, that's general fund. We did a lot of financial compliance issues, I'm going to announce later. We had a year-long gap in bank records creations and in financial procedures. We are now caught up for the first time in probably a decade. And we had a first, our first state-of-the-art budget, in which we won actually two awards. And I'll talk about more of those later. Because we had a, we have now a 20th, 21st century budget like other cities have, and we're really proud of that. And we have purchasing policies and controls in place. Personnel was incredibly busy, she's constantly hiring because we lose people because of our wages and whatnot. Main street relinquishment and beautification. You saw all the work that was done by Caltrans, and we were working with them, and our staff worked very closely with Caltrans in getting that done. We have a long ways to go. And we have pages and pages on things. Please take a look if you don't, to get an idea of the kind of things our wonderful staff is able to do. It's exciting. A lot of it's infrastructure. We have things like groundwater, developing our groundwater resources to make sure that the city of Willets is comfortable in its groundwater supplies. We have Blosser Lane Drainage Improvement Project, that was completed. We've got, the Maple Street substation needed to work because our pumps went out, so that's being worked on as we speak. So those are, those are some of the things that we were able to do. Now, the fun part is now, and this is the fun part, and the fun part is, what I did from this list is I took everything that was in progress and I put it on new lists. And I sorted it according to which department works on it, because we have, because it's sort of easier to group them that way. And now is your chance, and the council's chance, to look at those lists. And I know that our community development department has been given a lot of tasks. And now is your opportunity to look at those tasks and prioritize them. Tell us what's most important. Tell us what you want to have worked on first. Tell us what, because we can't do everything at once, we're a very small staff, but we need to prioritize. We have sort of prioritized, but we are open to you telling us, you know, tell us what you want. If you think of new things, I'm going to write them on this board, and we can brainstorm. Again, as we have such a small staff, I would suggest you pick a very limited number of things to work on.
Do you have that for us?
Yes, it is on your sheet. You actually have that, it's Attachment B. And it is on there as well, Attachment B. And there's little spaces next to it, so, you know, you can write in.
B and C and D are by department, but they include anything that was sort of in?
Yes.
Not finished yet?
Yes.
I wish you had told us that. I kept seeing, going back and forth and wondering...
I understood it, but I can't see, yeah.
I thought I had actually put that in the staff department, sorry.
Well, yeah, because I think, I think that was very helpful, I just was looking.
Sure, looking for your, but there might...
I have a question.
Yes.
We've talked about the size of the staff. How many employees are there currently?
There are approximately 46 employees, 43 now. And how many, well, we have our HR person who can answer all those questions. How many are in the police department?
That's fine, just no problems.
Not enough.
Not enough right now, but we have like, about 11. And in water and wastewater, we've got approximately five in each, five in each.
We actually have, if I'm correct, one has three, and wastewater has five. Public Works has five.
And Public Works has five. And...
Two in engineering.
Two in engineering right now, and that's Jeremy.
One in finance, one in HR.
We actually have one more in engineering, and she's being borrowed by finance for the next month or so. And we have, in the finance department, we only have three right now.
And then, before we decide what our priorities are, could we hear from the community?
Yeah, yeah, I basically want to set the stage first.
Yeah, and so, what I would suggest to you, and what's sort of common in other cities, is we are very small staff, lots of needs. It's going to take something to prioritize, but I would aim for about, think about three or four main goals you'd like us to work on. We can't work on 20. We just don't have the person power. So aim, my guidance is to aim for three, four, I mean, you can ask us to do 57, and that's fine, but I'm just saying that it's not going to do that. You can also pull things off the list. If we're not already in contract, pull them off the list. This is your list, this is, this is your, this is yours, this is the community's list. So this is really your time to talk about it and look at what we've got on our plate. You know, council has a tough job. They're going to listen to things from you that are great, to the great things that we want. And you're going to see things in there like you may not think are important, like having a roof over our equipment. Because we have, we need a building built so that our equipment doesn't rust. Because right now, we don't have that, and that's critical. And council has to worry about those things too. I mean, and that's a tough job, so that's, that's why they get the big box. But, and we really appreciate, these are tough decisions that council has to make. And so with that, I'm going to, we have Karen here, she's going to make a list because her handwriting is beautiful. And as people have ideas, we're just going to write them down.
All right. So I'm going to open it up to the public. You know, this is your, your time to kind of give us some suggestions. I kind of want to put it in context, you know, it's kind of like in your own house or your own household, you probably pay your rent and your PG&E and go to Safeway first before you decide to book the vacation at Disneyland, or to buy that extra DVD player or whatever. And we're kind of the same way, that there's some things that we got to do, then there's some things that we can, we can put off, or maybe we shouldn't, but we do because we don't have the money, and so on. And that's kind of how we kind of get things done. And sometimes you may want to do something, but you can't, and you, because you don't have enough people, or we're waiting on a grant or something like that, and so we put it off to another year just because it works better for us, even though it's something we want to move toward. So that's part of these goals. Sometimes they look like it's a moving target because some of them are. You know, over the years, and the whole time I've been with the city, there have been things where they go, we really want this, but man, there is a grant coming down from the state, and so we say, well, we'll wait till next year, maybe we can apply. So I kind of want to put that in context, that when you come up and hear that, keep that in mind, that if we don't pursue that this year or something like that, it's not because we don't value your opinion or anything, it's because, then we have to look at priorities and decide, what do we do? You know, it's like, again, like at your house, do you patch the roof, or do you go to Disneyland, or something like that, so. All right, at this point, I'm going to open up to public comment.
All right, I just want to say, I'm honored to be up here. Can you, is it, oh, okay.
Yeah, that's just for the, state your name, and that way for the record, and then...
I'm Shawna Jevins, and I am honored to be up here speaking in front of this council. I'm just honored that you're such great listeners. So what I want to talk about today is taking care of our youth, because I think that's a big priority. We have a skateboard park that opened to the public in 2004, and eight years later, we still haven't finished the plan. So it was a, I believe it was a three-phase plan where the skate park was going to be built, and then benches, bathrooms, water fountains, and shade structures were going to be added, but never built. And I really feel like the youth is our future, and I'd like to see that not get pushed off to year nine of not getting addressed. I'm going to turn it over to Alan. Actually, and can I have, there's a bunch of people in the audience here for the skate park, can I just have you guys stand up so we can see how many people are really interested in finishing the, finishing this project that we started in 2004, for the youth, because they're our future? Thank you.
So we have a real-life civics lesson tonight. We've got a lot of young kids in the audience, and so let's show them how this works and what we can do.
Mr. Grossman, now is the time to state your name.
Alan Grossman, thank you. Chief? Okay. Full deference to a tight budget and competing priorities. From my observation, the skate park sees more daily visitors than City Park or Rec Room. My family uses all three, and I know that's the case. Consider the amount of attention and financial support the city allocates to each. It may be geography, history, or it might be the constituency, but it's not right. I've been told the concrete at the park is outstanding, it's a great skate park. However, in the summer, it's really too hot to use. These kids are so dedicated, they're out there anyway, they bring their own water, but it's way too hot. And this is the city's responsibility, and you are the people who can do it. You are really the people with the authority to get it done. My family will pay for a str... My family will pay for structure like the one at the dog park. I've got a check for you. I've got some nice letters from other members of the community. We can get that done now. It's a Band-Aid. Doesn't have to take months, or years, or studies. We want the parents and the families to be at the park to support and supervise their kids, and kids who aren't supervised. But there is not one bench there. So parents and grandparents can sit on the concrete, hot concrete, in the middle of the skate area. Liability seems to be a big issue here. And having parents sitting in the skate field is probably a concern here. It's not one to me. I just want a place to sit, for other parents to sit. I think the city could do that. That's a few benches. That doesn't seem like a monumental undertaking to me. Longer term, we need shade trees. We need a shade sale. It would be great to have a shade sale. Maybe some lights, and of course bathrooms. Because bathrooms are just common decency. And especially for people who don't even live here in town, who don't have access to a home or business. And, you know, for other unfortunate people, bathrooms are common decency. There's bathrooms across the street. They're there, they're locked up. I've been in them. There is, okay.
Thirty seconds.
Thank you. There is okay as the bathrooms that we have at Bud Snyder Park or at Rec Grove. So it's a crosswalk, opening those bathrooms, a burden on city staff. Thank you. I don't mind burdening you guys. It's your job. Okay? And I appreciate it. So a shade sale and lights for using the park when the summer heat has waned? I also don't think that's monumental. That will actually cost some money. Can I have 30 seconds?
Go ahead.
Finally, trees. We know trees will take a while to grow. We know we need to nurture them. They represent something we can do right now. We can do it right now with our eyes on the future. Just as we invest our time and resources in these kids, now with our eyes on their future, and the future of this town. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, for showing up. You're great kids. Adults are not so bad either.
And I met with Mr. Grossman. I directed him to talk with our Public Works Superintendent, who, and I guess I may, or may not have told you also, to get with our city manager, regarding what you're talking about.
Are you going to write down the ideas that have come forward?
Yes.
There were actually a list. Yeah, just go ahead. You could flipscap.
So letters?
Work with me. We actually have, we were waiting for you to call, because we have lots of ideas for the shade structure. We also have a tree grant. Talk to me. Shh. And is your number on here?
All right. Would somebody else like to speak on something?
I just want to thank Alan for his gift in honor of the skate park. That was very generous.
Yes.
Alan, I think you've met with some other council members. But I told Alan, I was on the original committee with the skate park a couple of years ago, and I, in fact, I told him I paid for one of the tiles for part of fundraising a couple of years ago, too. So, all right. So again, if anyone would like to come up and speak? Please state your name.
It's Melissa Hardy. I haven't had the time to read through everything in here, but I think climate change is the most important issue of our time. So I want to put anything that's climate change-related at the top of the list. I think there's a solar water treatment plant item in here, and I saw some other sustainability stuff. So I just want to move them to the top of the list. Thank you.
All right. Anybody else from the public?
I was here the last meeting, not realizing that this was the event tonight. Brought up a couple of items, two streets, I'll just rename them, or three streets, actually. Bosco Bell, South Lenora, and Blosser Lane really need to be rebuilt. They are in terrible shape, and the transfer station's right there on Blosser Lane, and a school. And that very first part, until you get to Franklin's, a disaster. These streets need to be completely rebuilt. But that's not the main reason I'm here tonight, because I've already mentioned that before. Tonight, I want to talk about a dangerous situation we have at the post office. You have three streets and two intersections within 150 feet of each other. Inadequate parking, a disaster waiting to happen. The solution is a lobbying effort. Years ago, when we lost our grocery store out there at the Evergreen Shopping Center, and we only had one main grocery store, you had an employee, a lady employee, and I don't remember her name, that was working here, that did a lobbying effort of writing letters to different grocery chains to get a grocery store in there, and got Grocery Outlet in there. That same effort could happen to get a decent post office put here with ample parking. My idea is that we do a lobbying effort, not only to Huffman's office, maybe to the NCO, or any other group. You belong to a group, Jerry, that could help find financing and help the feds get us a decent post office. Right now is a good time. We have a perfect place. The northwest corner of Commercial and Main. It's a big lot. Picture a replica of the old Willets Hotel there, with the post office in there, and out at the front of it, an eating place like Schott's, like Friedman's has. Friedman's is the best place around. You go to Santa Rosa and Friedman's, it's nothing like Ukiah. It's a meaty place that Friedman's has. You could have a Roland's Bakery in front, or Schott's, or Brick House, or whatever, that would make a meeting hub and have a replica building. The owner of that property could well finance it himself. That could be a person to talk to. But I'm bringing this up because it's a necessity. I was here when the post office was where El Mexicano is. I was here when Safeway was where the post office is. It became so dangerous it needed to be changed. And it got changed. Now we need to move on to a better place. It'll make a meeting hub out of it. Your first two blocks of Willets, where you want to revitalize all these buildings? Well, that'll be at the first hub right there. People will stop there that are walking up from the skunk station. People will watch the parade from there. A lobbying effort by the city, just like you did PG&E with your letter. A lobbying effort, doesn't cost that much money.
Thank you, Joe.
My name is Josephine Silva, and I'm talking, I want to speak to a goal for revenue. I believe the old Willets Hospital, Howard Memorial Hospital, could be a wonderful place for the Measure B facilities. I do know that a CSU unit, which is a loft unit, it's very small, four beds, can bring in, or costs, $3 million. It needs a staff. And that staff is going to use a lot of the fragile businesses in this town and bring in more sales tax. A full-on use of a hospital, of course, brings more than, I don't know, 10 staff that a CSU would use. You're talking 25 to 30 people. I'm not sure, really. But the point is, as soon as you bring in 25 or 30 people, you're talking, I don't know how many families. And they go out, and they purchase things. Even if they live outside of the community, they're still going to stop in markets, they're going to stop at the bookstore, they're going to stop and use gas stations, and on and on. So for the city council to act in concert and ask Measure B to consider how the economic situation here in Willets, and to take that into consideration in their deliberations about using Howard Memorial as a mental health facility. I think that it is up to you to do that. There is a feeling that you're not in support of it. And I wonder why you're not in support of bringing more jobs to this city. Especially when you are underwater, as far as your finances are. Thank you.
Would anybody else like to speak? Wow, all these people.
Could I just, not my own comments, but I wanted to mention that there have been some Facebook postings about the fact that we were having this meeting, and some people put comments on there. So just, I didn't, I'm not sure I got them all, but I know that one person wanted us to deal with having a homeless shelter, a recreation center, a, you know, like a building where people, where there was recreational activities that other communities sometimes have. Somebody was very concerned that we clean up the vacant stores. And we do have an ordinance that is not yet completely implemented, but we have, we're trying to deal with that one. One person did not like the planters on West Commercial Street. Another person wanted to make sure that our police were more adequately staffed. Another person, who I don't think was here today, but wants the skate park to be improved. Another person wanted recreational opportunities to be improved. Another person wanted more opportunities for food trucks and mobile vendors. And we do have an ad hoc committee looking at that right now, too. Those were the ones that I found on Facebook a day or so ago. Just sort of further public comment that was available there.
Thank you for bringing those up. I also wanted to remind folks that last, in our last council meeting, there was a, Mr. Bolz's wife came and asked for support for a recreational facility, and I can't remember the name of it, but it is a.
Like a park horse.
Park horse, thank you. And also, and that is something that actually I've been contacted about a couple of times, the possibilities of partnering with Book Trails on that. So. It's like the 21st century version.
Good evening, Lyndi Johnson. I live in downtown Willets. I have two requests. One is far bigger than the other, so I'll start with the little one. Could we turn the water back on at the dog park? It's been off all winter. Why is that? Does anybody know? It's been off for months.
We have a really bad problem with pipes freezing down there. And then all of a sudden, the meters spin like crazy, because it hasn't been checked or for a few days or whatever. Generally, it's because of freezing problems.
And the water at the skate park doesn't work either?
That, generally because I'm spending 60 bucks a pop every once, two weeks for a new button control, because they like to hit it with their skateboards.
I've been there.
I, I don't know how, or they're kicking it, or whatever they're doing, but I keep losing those every one, two weeks.
I don't think Lyndi was.
But the dogs are not kicking the water fountain.
The pipes are just freezing.
It's a hardship when you've got a pack of dogs and they don't, there's no water. So I would really like the water to go back on in the dog park. And the more difficult task is, I'd like the city to do a study on their energy consumption. I, too, am concerned with global warming, and our children being too hot for generations. And I do believe that the city needs to solarize whatever is the biggest energy consumer, consumption that we spend our money on in the city. I think it's the waste treatment plant. I'd like to see the waste treatment plant go on solar. So a water fountain and solar power, that's all I'm asking.
All right. Anybody else? Want to kind of keep the public comment moving, so that.
Can I say something? So I also received many responses to my Facebook posts regarding this goal-setting session. I also received multiple emails from people. The biggest concerns that I heard were parking on Main Street, especially after the loss of a couple of spaces downtown. Safety, particularly crosswalks. The crosswalk at State Street that Bill Wilson has been working on and has purchased parts for. People really want that to happen. They're very appreciative that you've already taken the lead on that, and would love to see that finalized. Lights in the city parking lot on School Street between Wood and Mendocino. Many young women from the local retail establishments, the banks, the restaurants, park there. And they walk there during the winter when it's pitch black, and they don't feel safe. They would love to see some lights. I had a couple people tell me that they wish there were more trashcans on Main Street. It's a little tiny one, but there are basically no trashcans between the high school and Brick House. And, you know, the kids are walking there from lunch and back to school, and trashcans would be nice. Big, big concerns about the intersection at Highway 20 and Blosser Lane. And the city knows that. Been working on that. Caltrans is making noise about that now, looking at that intersection. Members of the community would love to see the city push for that to happen sooner rather than later. And it sounded at the MCOT meeting in December like something was going to happen there. So that would be great, and I think would really help the community feel better.
Surveyors were, from Caltrans, were out there for the roundabout.
Yeah. So MCOT, they suggested it wasn't a roundabout, it was an enhanced pedestrian safety, but not a roundabout, that it wouldn't actually fit in that location. And a lot of people concerned, from what I heard, the people who were talking to me, were trees. And dusty is all over that. So I think that that will actually help people. And not just on Main Street, not just at the skate park, but everywhere in town. People like trees. And I know trees can create problems for Public Works, and safety concerns, and broken limbs, and falling, and all of that. But people love what trees add to the community, and they like it when the city plants trees and maintains them. And our grant that we received that has money to plant up to 100 trees, I think will do a lot to make people feel like we are caring for the community, caring for the environment, and helping produce streets that people want to walk on. You know, if you have your chance to walk on a street with no trees, and a chance to walk on a street with shade, most of us are going to pick the street with shade when it's 100 degrees out in the summer. So those were the things that I heard about the most.
Do you want, anybody else from the public, and I'm going to see if any other council members want to start?
Can I have the door up there?
Yep, just state your name. Come on. We won't bite. And so the public can hear what you have to say.
I can sit here?
No, but the.
The microphones for the TV.
Yeah.
Millions of people.
They make you famous.
See my mark.
It will be nice to you.
So Gloria Westby. So on Blosser Lane, is there any way for the safety, that we can get maybe some speed bumps? People traveling on Blosser Lane, we do have cameras facing Blosser Lane. People are driving as fast as 30 miles an hour, even when the roads are nice and frozen, getting down to the stop sign, and almost not making the stop sign, and colliding with Highway 20. And thank goodness that there's no people traveling at that time, because they could get into a wreck. I have asked my husband that maybe we should put cameras facing Highway 20, so that we can actually start recording those collisions. So I don't know, maybe that's something that we could ask you guys to maybe start putting in, maybe some speed bumps on Blosser Lane?
So you're talking on Blosser Lane, as well as looking at that intersection, but the whole.
On Blosser Lane. Because people coming from Blosser Lane School to, towards Highway 20, are actually coming maybe 30, 40 miles an hour towards the stop sign. And if I were to get on the phone and call the police. And if I were to get on the phone and call the police, by that time, they're already on 20. I mean, if the kids across in the street, by the time they hook that corner, they'll kill the child crossing the street. That's one of my requests.
Anybody else from the public?
You survived.
Derek? All right. I guess at this point, I'll bring it back up here formally now. Greta, do you have anything else you wanted to say?
Yep.
Suprina? You look like you wanted to say something.
I do.
Go ahead.
I think Greta and Mad both covered quite a few things, but there was just a few others. I just want to reiterate that I heard quite a bit from the community about recreation. But also, I heard from individuals about retention of staff. There's been a lot of city staff that's recently left in the last year and the community has expressed some concern about making sure that we retain our staff and that we have quality staff. And specific, the police department, there's been a concern that we have been losing a lot of officers to other agencies. So they'd like to see us support keeping more of them. Some people expressed concerns about the center lane. Some people don't like it. They'd like to see us come back and put the center lanes in. And then the last one was about homelessness. And when I inquired a little bit further about it, they wanted to make sure that we're supporting a plan that ensures that our homeless are getting the mental health, that their mental health is being met. And then that brings me back to, I forget your name, but the woman who stepped up and talked about our position on Measure B. And the reason that I can tell you that I haven't taken a position on Measure B is because I don't feel like, as a council, we've had, we've take, we've set aside a time to listen to the public on how they feel about having a facility here. We hear from little pockets of people, but we haven't really had a full-on, and I know that we, as a council, may want to say, how do you feel about this specific plan?
Yeah, I'm just going to interrupt you. We don't have our city attorney here right now. But because anything happening at that building will require discretionary permits given out by the city, while this body will be the deciding body, they cannot give their opinions in advance of an actual project coming before them.
Okay, that's good clarification because we've all been holding, holding back.
And I think the real quick, kind of along that line is, because I've said it to people who've asked me, I said, when we see a plan come forward, be our opportunity, because I really pushed, and I'm happy that Measure B started having meetings, and apparently they're going to have them quarterly in Willets and Fort Bragg, et cetera, because one of the things we asked for, and the reason me and Larry started attending, is that stuff was being discussed and no one actually even gave us a hint that it was going to be discussed. And granted, nothing was set in stone, but I think the concern was that I personally wanted our community to be able to weigh in on it. Because I have people that come and chat with me and say, I want it. I have some people that tell me the opposite. And you're probably, you guys are all probably the same, you get that.
Right.
And the first thing I tell everybody is, I haven't made up my mind because I haven't seen the project, what they're actually proposing. Everybody says, take that old hospital and turn it into something. Okay, but what's the project? What does it going to entail? What are the impacts to the city, one way or the other? And that's something that I think we would discuss here and with our community in giving us the input. So that's, that's the deal there. So I haven't made up my mind because I haven't seen a project yet.
And that's exactly where I am. I haven't made up my mind because I haven't seen the information presented yet, nor have I had the opportunity to see how the public feels about it. And we try not to just listen to certain pockets of, you know, people who are pro or con on the topic, but make sure that we listen to all of this in public. That's it for me.
I'd just add my, my reservation on saying, you know, an opinion about, we don't know what the project would be yet. But I do want to make sure that it's known that we have not said we don't want a project there. And if there are people thinking that that's what we, the signal we have sent is not, that's not the case. We've said we want to be involved with any project development that comes along and make sure that, that the community's concerns about those, both the benefits and maybe disadvantages are brought to us and that we get a chance to weigh in. So we are closing that door at all. And I'm sorry if any people got that impression.
So, did you want, did anything else you want to bring up, call in or be here and chat before we break down? So if there's some things you want to communicate other than what we have already?
One of the things that, that I get, well, one, one thing that I did leave a message and got a call back from Dusty regarding, that we don't really have the general plan or the land use element of the general plan in our list at this point. And we had it in there May of 20.
It's a...
It is?
It's actually... On the back wall are all the projects that, that were on these lists that were in progress or not completed. And so that is in, the first four are the community development lists.
Attachment.
It's Attachment B.
I know, I'm looking at Attachment B.
It should be in there.
Well, it's not, and Dusty said that it's not.
And if it, and if it isn't, it should be.
It's not.
And that was an oversight on my part, no apologies. I can write that back down.
And I realize it's a long-term project and there may be staging of other things that have to come first, but I don't want us to lose sight of it. I guess the, the general plan that we now have on the shelf is from 1990, something?
Yeah. They planned the vision to, all the way to 2020.
Whoa. But it's from 1990, so it doesn't really reflect reality at this point in time. It didn't have any anticipation of a bypass or all sorts of other things.
Dropped off, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Okay, so, so that...
And you're talking about the, the land use plan of the general plan, the land use element.
Yeah. And so one of the things that is in the community development section is...
It's in Attachment A.
It's in this part.
It was in...
9.
So, so, so Greta, what I was trying to do, which I neglected to do, is take everything that had not been completed and move it over here. And so that's what I missed.
I think it was, it was gray in what has been done. And so maybe that's how you thought it's, because of the housing element and the safety element were completed.
That's exactly what happened.
Yes.
So we can put it back in there.
Right. And those, those are not the same as the land use element, so they, those, that hasn't...
They're pieces of the...
Okay, that was one of the things that I was particularly concerned about because I think it really affects, and we know we need to look at the zoning around town. There's a lot of things in the zoning that are kind of archaic and aren't really relevant to what's actually happening on the ground. And I know Dusty's totally aware of this and I know he has a lot on his plate, but I, I think we have to make sure that we're looking at maybe a two-year plan of how to get there. And that's going to include working on the potential annexation of places where we can have more housing, which is also a big priority. The other major, one thing that didn't come out as a separate little piece is Van Lane improvements. And I know a couple of years ago, we had quite a few people as volunteers, people around that area of Main Street and down Van Lane, who were coming forward with designs. They wanted us to look for some grant funding perhaps. And, and yeah, there's some other streets that need attention to, but Van Lane has potholes that you could really break your ankle in, so, and people are there at night because of theaters there. So I'd like to see that at least on our wish list.
Yeah, we first think that as a comment from people during public comment in the last year, that they would like lighting at Van Lane for the theater goers.
Yeah. Pete Swanton had some really wonderful visions for it. And I know we can't do every, every vision, but it, it's a very important part of how our downtown looks and how tourists who want to hang out and want to come to the theater. People come to the theater from Ukiah a lot. I've seen, you know, like a quarter of the audience is from Ukiah because we have such a great theater. So I'd like to make sure we, we have looked at that.
So I'm just going to let you know, as you make suggestions, I'm going to add them to my empty spaces.
Okay.
And up there. And then after we've added things, I'm going to ask you to prioritize, to help us prioritize.
Okay. Another thing, in the whole economic development area is one that virtually everybody wants us to have economic development. But when you get down to specifics, what exactly is the city council or the city staff able to do on, on economic development? We're kind of, we can have good zoning, we can have good processing of permits, we can be a friendly city, that's great. But it's really up to the private sector to, to come forward with, with projects. So that's, I don't want us to spend a whole lot of, of trying to do something when we don't really have the tools or authority to, you know, to pretend that we are going to create economic development. But there's one thing that was on our list for way back when the bypass was just being finished. We talked about increasing our presence on the internet so that people who are on the highway and they're getting hungry and they're coming, oh, Willets is coming up, let me see what's in Willets. I, I am not one of those people. I don't even have one of those devices. But I think having a better presence on the internet for people that are passing through on the bypass before they get to town, either coming or going south or north, would be a really wise investment for us. And I, I don't think the city itself can probably do that, but maybe the chamber, maybe we can get some funding. Anyway, that, I want that to be on our radar. And I think the really, oh, yeah. I think we need to decide whether a recreation district is really something we're going to go after. If we want more recreation money, and I'm not thinking about some things that we can, of course, do on the short term, but if we really want a funding stream to have a bigger recreation offerings for the whole community, it needs to be, that, the funding needs to be spread to the whole community. Right now, the city of Willets is providing a lot of recreation for people that don't live in the city. And I'm glad we're doing that. They do come and they spend their tax dollars, their, you know, sales tax here. That's great. But I think a recreation district is a, is a heavy lift. It's a lot of bureaucratic hoops to go through. I don't want us to keep saying that we need to do that if we're not going to do it in the next two years. I, I think we should decide. And there was, the big, the biggest element in the room for me is the climate change. And we're just one city, but we at the city probably have a higher energy consumption than any 1,000 of our residents. So each resident who saves money or saves, saves money and saves energy, great, you know, I try to do that. I know a lot of people try to do that. But if the city could have a forward-looking program to reduce the city's energy budget, it would save us money in the long run and it would also save a lot of greenhouse gases. And, and everybody has to pull on this because it's really a crisis and we don't have a lot of years to do it in. So I, I noticed that that has basically, because of staffing issues, has kind of fallen off even our wish list right now.
It's still on notice. It's actually, we, we had a report written and we actually were ready to move on it, but we need to hire that staff member, a staff member to do that. But it is absolutely about to be done and it was ready to be presented.
Okay, but I, I was disappointed that we didn't act on it at all, but I understand. I'd like to make sure that that comes back to our agendas fairly soon. And if it helps, I would be very happy to be part of an ad hoc committee to work on it, even absent having a staff person. The way, I think Suprina and I are working on the, the mobile vendor issue to try to clarify what we think are the options before we even turn it over to a lot of staff work because the staff is so...
I, I think the idea...
Anyway, I just want to put that out there. I am very happy to, to work on that and I have very relevant experience in past planning jobs that I have.
As I said, we were ready to move forward with the contract, with people to do that. And it's just a matter of having, but I need a staff member to actually manage that contract.
So was it, I think when we chatted about this, the idea was that we would bring the policy back to the council?
So, so we have three elements in our sustainability policy that, that when we last had, we had, had this in front of council twice. And the last time it was in front of council, we were given direction, very specific direction to come back with certain things. And we watched the tapes several times, so we knew what the consensus of council was to do three things. And one of them was to come back with a sustainability policy with some, with some guidelines on how we live our lives as city, as city workers and as a city, that to make sure that we were operating in, in a way that is cognizant of our current climate crisis. And, and so we actually have that ready to go. We did a lot of research on different plans. I do want to say that these are typical, when you have a sustainability plan for the way you want to do business, that is, one of the things I found out through research is, is typically only larger cities do that. Smaller cities really don't have the time to do that. But we, we researched it, we have it ready to go, and we think it's a, it's a broad, it's some broad guidelines, but I think it's a really good thing that we can do. These are all attainable goals and I'd like to bring that forward. We don't need staff to do that. What it is, is directives for how we do things. It's might, being mindful of the way we write products and services to make sure that we're, we're being mindful of the environment. The second thing, the second piece of the puzzle was looking at, we have a very complex system of utility bills. There's no city that really understands our utility bills because we have so many meters and all that. So there are actually companies that are out there that will review bills for you and will audit them to make sure they're correct. And they don't require us to pay them any money. They will actually do it for a percentage of the savings. And we researched a lot of those. Actually, our former employees, they allowed this, did a lot of research on that, founded company that many, many, many cities are using and they really love this company. And we are prepared to contract with that city to do that work. And we're excited about doing that work, but right now, we literally do not have the staff to manage that contract until we hire a person to do that. We just don't have anybody with that body of knowledge. The third thing we're going to do is what is state-of-the-art in the industry of sustainability for public entities, is to have companies come in and do an audit of your system, your entire system. And what they're looking for is they look at your current energy bill and they say, okay, you spend $10,000 a month in energy costs. I will build you solar panels, I will build you some sort of an energy-saving system and I will do it and that will save you maybe $2,000 a month. And I will figure out a way to fund that major infrastructure project using the, the utility bill that we currently pay, so we will not have to pay more, but it will fund a major project. That is stage three because first we need to get the $10,000 bill down to hopefully $8,000 bill so that they, the delta that we're, we're working with is lower. So that's why there's a three-stage system. It was, it was laid out, I've worked with Suzanne actually quite a bit on this. And, and, and we will do it. I think it's a, it's a good plan and, but it's up to you. I mean, it was, it was there for a staff report, but I do want to wait till we have somebody on board to really manage the project. And of course, it's a waiting ear approval as well.
Could the policy come forward as...
The policy can come forward and I, and if it is your pleasure, I will do that next meeting. It's ready to go.
I'm certainly in favor of, of having the policy, which is just general guidance for not only the staff, but for the city council itself, if projects come to us, that we look at, at our energy impact and our sustainability impact. So I, I, I welcome that. And I, I wonder how, well, I guess I'll, I'll discuss it with staff too, but if we have a good outfit that has already been recommended by, of pretty good research on all the different companies that might offer this, basically an audit to see if we're overpaying for what we're, what we're, what we're currently doing, you know, not the next step of getting some new infrastructure that might also save even more. But how can we save on what we're currently doing? I would wonder if we couldn't actually go ahead and then when that results come back, then we need to have staff to, but that's my, that's my bias.
I do need a staff... Yeah, I do need a staff member to manage that process, and actually going to the, into entering the contract actually is probably the most staff-intensive time, is the negotiation of the contract and being that rolling forward. So I do need to wait for that to happen unless you want it. I just don't have the knowledge base and anyone on staff that has that time at that time, but we hope to hire someone soon. I mean, I don't think it's going to take a long time to hire a person.
That's true.
Yeah, I just also want to say that when I first came on city council, which was seven years ago, this was one of my priorities then. And at that time, we had an unresolved lawsuit going with Brook Trails, and we couldn't kind of change the system because, you know, it had to be, had to go through the whole lawsuit thing, and several years have gone by, and we're still kind of resolving the auditing of the energy use at the sewage treatment plant. So, you know, I feel like I've been waiting and waiting and waiting, and I'm just really eager that we move ahead because we're already, not we, the city, so much, but we, humanity is way behind where we want to be. And it's, I'm worried about my daughter and my grandnieces and nephews and all of yours, and, you know, we don't have many years to start writing our course and saving what there is for the future. So I just think everything the city could do to move this forward, and I know that we have a lot of other, you know, super-duper priorities, but I just don't want this one to keep going to the back burner, to be on the back burner. I want it to be on the front burner.
I do a quick question. It's been weighing on my mind since I went through the grapevine that we lost somebody in the engineering department, and I know, I wish I'd heard about it before today, but my question is, how many of these projects do we currently have that are going to get put on the back burner until we hire a replacement? So, I mean, we're setting goals, but how many of the current goals are going to be tied up until we can find a replacement?
I think for this particular employee, was a part-time employee, she was not a full-time employee, and the majority, so her infrastructure work is being kind of absorbed by the current staff members, project management. The, however, this part of it was something that we don't have another person to do a knowledge base, so we have to wait for us to.
On the project you were talking to manage about, are there any other projects, like the Maple Street project?
Nope, that's rolling forward.
That's rolling forward. There aren't any other projects that are currently in process that'll get stopped?
I don't think so.
Jeremy, I'm the project manager. Suzanne had planned to take on the structure, the waste water plant project. That would probably put off, but the pump station's still going to.
So just the wastewater plant?
Yeah, I mean, we were looking at the, just the protective structure that they, since I started here 12 years ago, I think we're going to put that off. Probably not going to be able to.
And that was actually, had some struggles with contracting, the way it was being contracted. And we had kind of come to the conclusion that may actually have to be built by internal staff, probably. So maybe our public affairs department builds that, so it may not be a contracted-out project because something like that is technically called design-built, and cities can't do that. And again, I'm speaking for a city attorney, so I don't want to do that. But that may, again, it's in our list of priorities. You can say what our order is, but that actually may be a public works project.
Larry, did you?
Yes, I'd like to say, first of all, with the skateboard park that you people, water has been put there, I don't know how many different times to make sure that it's working. And it's been a problem for the city from the since the time we put it there. And I am the third member of my family to be on council, and it's been a problem every time for every one of us, the three of us. There was a restroom there, and somebody decided to burn it, and so it had to be hired all the way. The water and the sewer thing is something that is of real hardship because there's nobody to watch it. And, you know, and things just happen, and, you know, I don't have a solution to it. I'm just saying that these are things that have happened over the years that I've been aware of. I go, and the lady that was here about the Measure B, I don't think that I have missed two meetings of the Measure B in all the time that it's been going. And like Jerry said, we have no comment because nothing has come in for, before us as a group of, a body of people. But I have gone to it every time, and it's interesting because what I see in the years that I have been going to it, the two, three years, this is starting the third year of the Measure B, it's a different group of people that come with different ideas. And the hospital is, is something that has come up every time, and it's just, nothing has ever happened from the county. And if you go to the Measure B for a while, it's real difficult to get anything that is final, that the county can come up with and Measure B people can come up with the same. And they're starting to, this is the third year that I've been going to it, and it's just really difficult, I'll just put it that way. And it's not the city of Willets, it's the whole Measure B project, and it's very expensive. We have sales tax, our tax, we have taxed ourselves as a county to pay for it, and we've collected quite a bit of money, and they just haven't come up with a process to spend it, or most of it. I've been a merchant on the, in the city of Willets for a lot of years, and I finally retired. And the tree thing is something that we have always, in fact, the things that Greta got, I got 10 years ago, and I can go back and show you council people that were here 15 years ago, and they can tell you the very same things that you people brought up this time. And it's just, money is the object, and that's what happens. The one thing I can say as a merchant, and I will say that, and I'm sure I'll be booed for it, is that every time you order something from eBay, and it comes to your house and is delivered to your house, we don't get any taxes for that. And that is a killer for any small community, and I don't care where it is, in California, that's a killer, because we don't get any tax for it. And so consequently, when everybody is getting all of the things that they need from all of the different internet companies, it's just hard on a small community, and that's why, that's why we're in, and some of the trouble we're in. If it wasn't for grants for the trees and the pavers and these kinds of things, it would be a lot harder than it is going to be. And one of the reasons on the street, and I'm sure that people have told all the people this, is we've been waiting for Caltrans to turn it over to us so that we can do things. They have held it, and it has to go through the state to say, you know, it's relinquished to the city, and then the city can do things with it. But we can't even put down a paver. And I know that the chips are, you know, three, four, five inches packed down, and people are tripping over them and whatever, but the city can't do anything about it because the state controls that section. These are the things that you people need to know, and I'm not a naysayer, I'm just saying that these are things that have happened, and people ought to know that these are things that make it really hard for us to be up here. And I've been up here for a lot of years, and it's time for me to retire, and, but I've got three more years to go, so you're not going to get rid of me that soon. But these are things that has tried to happen, and we just can't do it. We don't have the staff or the money, and we have the lowest-paid staff in the county. And so consequently, people come here, they get their education, they get their experience, and they go someplace else. And there's no solution for that, for us. What else was I going to say? I think that's all the preaching I need to do to this community. Thank you very much.
We've had a request for a break up here, so I'd like to take, let's call it a five-minute break, but we can be back by. And thank you to our staff that's here right now, and I appreciate, I know at some point, I personally want to, if you guys want to say something or what's up, I, I think the one thing I want to say is that there's the, what I want, what we have to have, whether we, whether I want to do climate change, or I want to do skate park, or I want to do something else, what I, as a council, I need to hear from you guys, hey, you can't ignore this, this has got to happen no matter what. So I really want you guys to, Jim's name?
The one thing that hasn't come up so far is Sabrina and I were with a person from Family Tree, and we looked at the Grove Park at the rodeo grounds area, and about the trees, about, we know that we lost one tree and it took out a section, just a little section of the Boy Scout hut, and these are things that we're going to have to look at, and it's going to be an expense, and we're starting on that. And we're having somebody come and check it and to try to put something, and that's a liability for the city, and we all know that, and we're going to try to do the very best that we can to rectify that in a small amount over the next five years or whatever it takes. But that needs to happen also, and that hasn't even been in the mix yet.
So Karen, could you add that to our list, tree care and maintenance?
That reg, something. Just to piggyback on what you said, Mayor, I just, I know that some of the things on this list have to be done because they're tied to grant money, and so they have to be prioritized. So before we all start putting stars on things, I would love it if you could clarify which of these things really, you know, can't take a backseat at all, so that it's clear to everyone in the room that they are indeed priorities.
Yeah, because I think that, they kind of jumped to the top of the list because we've made commitments for those sort of things.
So I was going to suggest, and I, I'm somewhat reluctant because I want us to keep moving too, but I think it would be really helpful to not try to make a decision tonight because I think we want to take into account what we've heard from the public, and I think doing it by department and then also indicating which ones we actually have a secured funding source for as you go down. And maybe the top list in each department are the things that we absolutely have to do. They're like, you know, like doing the dishes, you can't just let them build up forever, you run out of dishes, whatever it is. So the first ones are the ones that the staff is saying, we've got to do these because we're committed to it. We already have a contract, we already, you know, have funding, whatever it is. The next ones are ones that we maybe have funding for, but we don't necessarily know whether we have enough staff to do. And then there's the wish list stuff that comes after that. But I would find that really helpful for us as a council to then say, okay, we just, you know, have to lop stuff off of the wish list. But I don't, I don't feel like I have enough of handle on the existing priorities, sort of like what you did, you know, a year and a half ago in May of, whatever it was, 2018, here's the stuff we have to do, but do it by department, because I really like.
By department's definitely easier.
I like that, and it really forces us to be realistic about our staff and forces the staff to look at, you know, how much can they handle what's in their bailiwick? And maybe there's some things where a different department could do something where, I don't know if that's the case or not, but I think it would be very helpful for me to not try to take an action tonight, but to see kind of the revised list prioritized that way, and then we grapple with the hard decisions after that.
And I think, following that, and Greta, you had something you wanted to add, but the other one too is that we are pressed for funds, and that, the example I'll give to everybody is that the whole time I was police chief, I, I think I told this to Mr. Grossman the other day, that I was told to cut. Every year I was cutting something, and yet the public had an expectation, and to me was, well, I'm going to get you cops on the street, but all those old fancy things you're doing somewhere else I can't do because I either don't have the money or don't have the staff. And I think, staff, you don't have to jump up and say, hey, your name, but it sounds like you guys are in the same boat, or continue to be, that there may be things that you think are either best practices or, you know, we, you know, there's the got-to-do's, and it seems like a lot of times, here's the got-to-do's with the money you've got to work with. And I want to thank you because I do appreciate all of you guys that are working here, because you're kind of balancing out, and I hope you, working with your city manager, make sure that we are made aware of what we need to address right away. So I want to point, Greta, if you want to ask more to say?
Well, I just, one of the things that I was thinking about a lot while I was looking, especially at Attachment C, was the fabulous State of the Roads report that the engineering department gave last year. And I know there are a couple of road projects on here, the West Mendocino Drainage, Creekside, Coast Street Sewer Replacement, but I don't have the road report in front of me to sort of make sure that all those things that were prioritized on that list for 2021 and 2122 are still on this. Because, I mean, I know I had that conversation with you, Jeremy, and we sort of, with all the projects that were done in this last year, we really tapped out the half-cent sales tax fund, and so it's going to take a little bit of time to regenerate, to keep going on this level of projects. But, you know, that was a very public report that was given, and I think a lot of members in the community took that as almost like a promise that we were going to do those things, and I want to make sure that those are still on the list of priorities for the next two years.
Yeah, they are. I don't think we have road projects specifically, you know, planned for next year, but we have the Big Al project, which is.
That's the PPP?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
We were considering, you know, West Mendocino, doing something there this year, but probably not going to get to it, and it was kind of a long shot even this year in the year. And probably wasn't going to include paving anyway, probably just going to do drainage and then try to come back and do paving later.
Okay.
So, yeah, everything except Pine Street and Vicinity that was on that list is still on that list, and we're still working on it for sure.
Okay. On that same subject, the things that John Almeda, Almeda mentioned, the Bosco Bell, South Lamar, and Blosser, are those on the list?
Blosser is big time, probably 75% down the plans for that. It's one that we want to seek funding for. We don't have funding for it, but I have been prioritizing it because it's a good project to look for funding for because of the school.
And then the comment about traffic calming there too was, would be part of that.
Yeah, I mean, I don't have speed bumps in the plan, but, you know, there's some other pedestrian improvements that are traffic calming. And then Bosco Bell and South Lamar, obviously, we are well aware of, and have looked at those as paving and ramp-only projects. I think the utilities are good, but that's something, you know.
But just having that kind of comprehensive, what's on the list for the next year or the next two years or whatever.
I mean, Blosser would be one that, you know, in the next two years, we've kicked around phasing it, doing two halves, one side of the railroad tracks and the other side, maybe. That would be a way that it might have something done maybe next, not this coming summer, but the next summer.
What I would suggest is, last time we did the goals as one session, then we had a whole council thing about roads, and it was a state of the payment, and I would love to do that again. So it's all the way about streets. Let's prioritize streets, because that is a specific funding source, and it's sort of, we can isolate that really easily. And the reason we're doing the goal-setting now is because we want to get into our heads what we're doing so that we can do our budget, and because we're doing our, we are starting budget. And because we're doing our, we are starting budget preparations already, so that's kind of why we're doing this. So we would love to bring you back a pay, and maybe that's the goal. The goal is to bring you back a state of the pavement report, to show us all the streets and get the input, and I'd like that as a goal.
Yeah, I think that's important, because I think that, I'll tell you what I like about the report that Jeremy produced for us is that, I mean, I'd like to tell you that in the past, you always heard that, well, so-and-so talked to council member X, and got a street paved, and the reality is that, well, no, I mean, that's, that's when I was growing up, that you heard those, like, whether it was true or not, don't know. But the reality is that I really think the process should be more scientific in the sense, or, in the sense, yeah, granted, the public has an opportunity to comment at these meetings, and, but at the same time, there are some streets that are more viable than not, but people complain about, yet we have other ones that are in desperate need, and I, I like the fact that when I get your report, I de-politicize it and look at it as, this is a roadmap for me to decide how to spend our limited resources and our road, road tax money that we have, because we made a promise to the community councils before when they got that passed, that we were going to spend it wisely, and that's what we try to do, so.
Can I say one more thing? Just, I'll be real quick.
Okay.
Okay. I just wanted to say that, you know, I understand, we don't want to, we really don't, at least I'm speaking for myself, and I think it's true of all of us, we don't want to pile on, and we know how much you all do, and we're so appreciative of what does get done. To me, the way I look at this is, like, big picture, you know, not just this year, not just the next two years, what are we moving towards? And if we can all get onto a consensus of what our game plan is, then it's like we're all playing the same game, instead of each of us thinking, well, this is my priority, this is my agenda, let's, like, that's how I see this, what this process is, and that's what I would like, that's what I would hope that we're all moving towards. So I certainly hope that, if I'm throwing things out there, none of you are feeling like, oh, God, she's adding more to my list, that's really not my intention, it's just, if it's not on the list, it's never going to get done. But if we get it on a list, at least we can all agree, this is something we want to move towards. It doesn't matter if it takes a year or 10 years, I mean, it does matter, but you know what I'm saying, it's, we're going somewhere. That's all.
So I've got a couple things, but I kind of like Madge's idea for the interest of kind of moving this forward, maybe we just go department by department, but I do want to bring one thing up, because I'm afraid he's going to get a call, and he's going to get out of here before... Myself and Larry have been meeting with the fire department, our counterparts over there, and the chief, fire chief, regarding, it was always our intent that we provide funding for the fire department, and I asked the chief during the break to come up and speak as to what he would get for this. We came to an ad hoc agreement, and the process is, we kind of hash out on a possible agreement, we kind of run it by you guys in theory, and then it goes back to Stephanie to execute the contract, and we vote on it with full public comment. But the idea that we came up with was allotting 25% of our cannabis taxes net after expenses to the Lake Fire for mitigation regarding cannabis operations, and also it kind of works too well. So if you don't mind just giving a, if we did do this as a council, and this came back, what would we get for our money?
Can I ask a quick process question? Is that item on the list now?
Yes. I put it on the list.
Okay. Because I just want to make sure it's on the agenda.
Yes, it is.
Okay, good.
Mayor, council members, thank you. Chris Wilkes, the fire chief. So since the passage of Measure I, as maybe citizens don't know, the fire district is not a city, you see, we don't, we don't take any of the general budget money, we're not paid that way. We're a fire district that supplies service to the city for, in exchange for dispatch, municipal water, municipal sewer. When, we worked together with the community development department to build Measure I, and to build a comprehensive cannabis ordinance within the community, it was a collaborative effort. We wanted to see public safety, we wanted to do everything that we could do to make it, or have it be viable if the council chose to have that ordinance go through within the city. When the ballot language was placed, it was to fund items such as police, fire, roads, and recreation. I think that's, I think that's the best way, use of that kind of tax and that kind of money. But it takes a negotiation in order to get that money back to the fire district, because we're not contracted that way to the city. So we, we put together an ad hoc committee, two members of my board, and two members of the council, to come up with what we thought was a fair amount of money for that, or a percentage of the money. What we came up with is what's before you hear in Attachment D, 25% of cannabis taxes net after expenses. Those expenses also include a 7% admin fee for the city's collection and dealing with that, which is totally reasonable. The big reason for us being a part of it is, it takes, it takes, especially with the extraction facilities, it takes the fire department's signature, and police for that matter, in order to get the state licensing that the vendors or the people that own these, the proprietors of these businesses need to get their state license. So we're assuming a large liability with the sign-off of the equipment within these facilities. That's the big one alone. Title 17 of the California Code of Regulation says, in order for that to happen, we have to sign off. That's the, that's the big kicker. The other was, the public voted on it, it was such as police, fire, roads, and recreation. So, you know, our public wants to feel safe, we want to have a good place for our kids to go play sports, go to the parks, go to the skate parks, and, you know, and we want good roads to drive on, we're talking, we're having that conversation here tonight. So through much talks, I want to say, I want to appreciate that that ad hoc committee did their homework, they pressed pretty hard for us to make sure to, it's not a bad thing, it's a good thing, they're protecting the city dollar, to come up with the right percentage, and we were able to finally work together to whittle it down to 25%, which we're happy with that as, as the fire department, we feel like that that meets our need for that, and our portion of what the ordinance brought to the community, and I'd be willing to accept any questions on it.
And Chris, as part of this money, obviously, you, what sort of things would you be funding at the fire department?
For us, initially, I mean, it's not a huge windfall of money, so I don't, I want to be clear that it's not like a great big bunch of money that's coming in, that we're going to just be able to fund new positions and everything. But initially, for us, it's response stuff for these facilities, for one. We have a pretty major extraction facility in the community, the first thing that I would buy is some of the meters that we, we carry, what we call, as an example, and I'll be quick, we carry a four-gas analyzer, it's a, it measures for flammable gases, carbon monoxide, hydrogen sulfide, and oxygen. Anyway, when you go into these facilities, if they have a flammable vapor alarm going off, which we've been to multiple times, I want my duty officers having one of those in their hand, they can stick in the door as they make entry to these things. To me, that's a primary piece of equipment. Well, you can buy them fairly cheap, you can buy them for several hundred dollars a piece, or you can buy a good one for, you know, 1,800 to 2,000. Well, my duty officer's going to get good ones, I don't, I'm not going to put them in a position where they're going to show up with something that's not right. So equipment and training are the top priority for me. If for some reason down the road, there is a larger windfall of money, keeping in mind that what's not written here, there is a max right now on the amount of money that could come to the fire department on that 25%, and that's $150,000, we're nowhere near that. But if for some reason it ever got to that point, and I could get to the position where I could hire a fire marshal to lead me some of those duties, that's like, be like the big thing for me, I would love to fund that position that way. It's a position that we need, that we just, we just can't afford. So ultimately, that's the kind of things that we'd be willing with that money.
And why are you starting, in case the council has questions? I wanted to explain to everybody that when Measure I came into being, the funding a lot went into our general fund. What I asked the chief to explain as part of this is that we are short money. This is kind of like, the example I gave to him, is this is kind of like me going home today and telling my wife that I'm giving the neighbor a third of my paycheck or so, in this case, a quarter of my paycheck, and, and having to say, why? And that's why I asked the chief, because we have this commitment with our fire department, and the rest of the money does go to bolster up, you know, in-house, the money ends up making its way in the general fund, because it goes out there. Again, it's not coming in in what I call tons, but I think it's one where, and it could fade away, you know, depends on what, what happens, you know, I think it's like anything else, we have to kind of diversify our portfolio, so to speak. But I wanted, if there were questions with the council, but I wanted consensus as far as us bringing this back, this, we've come to an agreement, but not a formalized one, where the city manager would bring back a contract during an agendae session, where we would vote on it as a council, so. Does anybody have questions, and the fire chief? I just, at this point, I'm just looking for consensus as far as bringing this back...
Emma, yes.
To, for a contract?
So we're basically directing staff to proceed with this, yeah, this idea?
I would just work with Jim Lance and do that.
Yeah, I'm in favor of that, too.
Yeah, I just, I, the only thing I'd like to remind the rest of the council of is that we did hear police, fire, roads, and recreation, so although I support this, I would hope that we're also keeping in mind the, the police, I think we're doing okay on roads, but certainly police and recreation, we've not seen an increase in funding, and so I hope we keep that in mind as well.
Yeah, we've just seen decreases in funding. We've only seen decreases in funding.
Yes.
But our insurance companies are becoming, are very well, okay?
All right, so this will come back at a later meeting, once they, the attorney's, attorney looks at it and comes back, and then will vote on it as a council, and then it'll go before their board to sign and execute, so. All right, that's, that's one thing I wanted to bring up. The other thing I emphasize, I think we've all heard, and I'm not just saying because I was the former police chief, but our police chief's going to be gone here, I think, February 1st is your...
No.
March 1st, sorry. So getting a police chief or interim police chief on board so that we can continue hiring officers is important. It's one of our major departments in the city, and so I want to see that that's up there. Again, like I explained before, we're balancing all these other things, and, you know, there's some gotta-dos and some that, so that was the, there. And then the other one is, we're going to be working on our budget here shortly, and I want to make sure that we're in, you know, we, you know, when we, when we look at things, and I agree, we probably ought to just have staff report up and give us the gotta-dos, and then go from there, and then...
We could probably do that now, I mean, I think staff knows this list backwards, forwards, like they dream about it at night. My guess is that, would it be helpful if they, I know Dusty's list is particularly ominous, and I think that it would be very helpful to have some guidance from council on what your thoughts are the most important things, and what community development department, how they should be arranging their time, and if there's something you want them to do first, we sort of want to hear it. Because although there's a lot, we want to keep everything on the plate and add more to, but it just helps us.
I personally would rather that we schedule that for either the first or second February meeting, to come back so that we've had a chance to really digest it. I know that they have been living it, but, and I know you got this to us a week and a half ago, which was, was helpful, but I didn't understand that you were kind of throwing out Section A and looking more at B, C, and D, and I, and I think some things have come up tonight, and also the funding sources aren't looked at, or the kind of prioritizing of the things that we absolutely have to do. I, I think that would be helpful for me, and I'd rather schedule it than myself.
Can I just, my number one goal that mostly affects Dusty is housing. I have other goals that are important, but if it touches housing, that for me is like the number one goal, when I thought of all the things that I'd like to see improved that are important. Without housing, all these other pieces don't come together, we can't, we can't increase sales tax at the rate we want because we can't open up a business, because we can't find employees, because they don't have, have housing. Everything keeps coming back to housing. So housing is my number one goal.
Okay, I, Larry, did you want anything? I, I don't know, I think it would help me just, even if it was just kind of an idea for tonight, your highlights of we gotta-do as we, as I get a chance to digest this, and I'd like to hear from the different departments just tonight, what, again, I'm not going to hold you to it completely, but it gives me an idea of what, what you tell me we gotta-do versus as we go into this list, it helps me pare things down. So I don't know if I'm going to put you on the spot, Jeremy?
I can start, and I'm going to do my best, there might be things that I'm leaving off, and I can email you or something, so...
So if you refer to an attachment...
You just go through your list and sort of talk about the things on the list that you provided.
Well, I mean, so, I mean, I made it short.
Thank you.
But again, I'd like to, like, talk to Andrea, too.
Okay. No, no.
There might be other stuff, but, but the dam inundation mapping is tied to funding and that's actually...
By the way, it would really be helpful to have a numbering system or something so that we can quickly find what you're talking about. And that isn't you, it's, you know, like, when it comes...
Page, bottom of page one of Attachment C.
Okay.
Very nice, thank you.
And that's something Suzanne was working on as well, actually, so hopefully Laco has some help they can offer with that. I haven't given a lot of thought to that, but I know it has to be done, so.
That's the emergency plan?
Yes.
Okay.
At the top of that page, the pavers slash the urban forestry project, those are, I mean, that needs to be constructed as one project, and I believe the tree work is tied to funding, and it's meant as, as Dusty?
Correct.
Yeah. So that has to be done.
So those are together as a must-do?
Yes. Middle bottom of that page, annual striping, that's tied as one, that's something we do every year, and it's, you know, it's, we have to do that as well. And then, I don't think it's even on this list, but the PPP, the dig-out pavement preservation project, that's also tied to funding, that's, it's a $100,000 patch that we get, and use it, we lose it, so.
And what's it called?
It's the pavement preservation project we're doing. Last, last year we did the three-seal, this year we're finding some...
I thought I saw it in here somewhere.
I think it was on A, Section A. It needs to move over.
So it didn't get onto C? And that's a must-do, because we have to funding to do.
And then again, Blosser is potentially tied to future funding, the sooner we get that, the sooner we can apply for funding for that project, so that's been something I'm really trying to sneak in as far as design work. But I guess it's not a gotta-do, but it's something I really want to get done. I've also been working on that since, like, 2009, so it really...
Jeremy, you tied in with the relinquishment sign-off requirements, is that yours?
Yes, yeah, that's it.
We got that pending, right?
We got, dropped a gigantic packet of materials that I put in Jeremy's box today.
Thanks, he sent me stuff individually.
Is that on the list?
Yes.
Little question.
Bottom of page two.
Oh, yeah, okay, so that's a must-do.
And then the same page one, I guess it's more Scott, but the NDBS permit has to be done, obviously.
Which one is that?
That's the bottom of page one, just above the emergency action plan.
Oh, yeah. Waste water and water compliance.
And you do that for them, is that how that works, sir?
Engineering has helped.
Oh, okay.
Andrea's done it a while ago, Suzanne was doing it before.
Because I know you're spread out amongst a couple of departments, right?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
We're all in a tie.
Yeah, these three work together, groups.
Okay.
Kind of...
Sounds like you're on it now.
I know, I'm just saying, so these projects he's, that he spoke of, are, we all collaborate on.
Okay.
So, and I know the maple pump station is in contract, so that is destined to be completed this fiscal year. That's on the back. Sorry, yeah.
Near the bottom?
Yeah, near the bottom.
Page two, the Maple Tree Pump Station?
That's in progress.
Yeah. Is that going to, did I hear that it's going to be done in this fiscal year?
That's the plan.
Okay, so, so basically, it will not, yeah, okay.
It's, yeah, it's already being done.
Oh, okay.
We have, we have the contract, we have the funding, you guys already voted on it.
Another big project. Another big project that Scott just reminded me of that has to get done is the groundwater project, just above Blosser, second from the, it's also tied to funding.
Right, we just approved that at the last meeting, right, the contract.
We're contracting out the, the engineering and project management, but there's still significant time to manage the consultants. Probably Andrea and Scott will have a lot to do with that.
Page two.
And that's actually, our outside consultant is actually our city engineer, so that helps. So, we, they don't, they need very limited oversight because it's Laco that's doing it, and that's our city engineer, so it's pretty seamless there.
So, it's, it's a must do, or, yeah, because we've already contracted to have it done.
Waste water treatment maintenance building, we've had that on set for, I think, two budgets now. Granted, there's some snags on how we can properly build it, and it's coming out a lot harder for, for us to be able to do design-build. We're trying to figure out how we can go about that, and we're not familiar with it. So, that is, it's not a major, I mean, we'd love to do it, because we have a $500,000 piece of equipment that can be housed in there and not weather damaged, freezing, anything like that, so.
Which?
We'd like to get it done, but we're still trying.
The maintenance building, that's in the middle of page two?
Yes.
Okay, so it's a high priority for you, but it's not, oh, it's not an absolutely must do, is that?
Yeah, it's, it's been on there for, like I said, two budgets now, so we're gonna get it off of there.
I don't want to interrupt your flow too much, but if, if we do go ahead with at least the shade structure similar to the dog park at the skate park, if we have, if we want to take advantage of this donation and the need to put up a structure, does that involve city staff, and to what, where, where does that go?
Yes, we've actually talked about that when the idea was brought to us. It's really doable, and Bill had a lot of really good ideas for what a shade structure could look like and should look like, and I'll let him speak to that, but.
Let's, let's finish with Scott, though.
Okay, yeah, but he could talk, he could speak to the, because we've been talking about skate park.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
What else do we have? The, remove the weir for the, to promote the fish passage, sorry, that kind of has been pushed back.
Near the bottom of page one.
Sorry, right above.
Yeah.
Water and waste water compliance.
And I'm just gonna speak a little bit in detail for that. So, so the technical issues regarding the weir are being taken care of, and in other words, it measures water. However, what is remaining is this blockage in the stream. That's been there for a long time because that's, that's the old way you used to be able to measure water. And environmentally, a more sound way to do things would be to remove that so fish could pass, so it is, while it's not, so then this, anyway, it, we've had it for a long time, it can stay there for a while, however, it would be really nice to remove that for the fish. Is that a good way of putting it?
Yeah, no, that's true. It was a priority at first, and then it's backed off, because.
It's backed off because now, now with the, the technical requirements of a weir are being met, it's now the, the environmental effects of having a, a blockage in the creek are still of environmental concern.
And I think that's all we have. I, I have on, on the water and sewer, I know, actually, one more thing, river wet.
Right, it's a biggie.
Blosser, I, I, we are, we do have all our lines inspected, we're prioritizing, you know, repairs. That, I believe they, September 2020 is the seven-year allotment that they gave us from September 2013.
So, it'll be cleared off the list by next year.
Seven years, yeah.
Does that, does that mean you have to have done some more repairs by then?
Well, to, to meet the requirements of what they asked us in the, in the lawsuit.
Is that doable?
Yeah, so the camera was a big one, it was a rating. There's a rating system, one through five, it can last 10 years, if it could last 20 years, you know, prioritize your, 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 your main problems.
I guess what I'm asking is, are there repair projects that have to be on our docket between now and September 20?
No.
No.
I don't believe so, because they asked us to give us a list essentially.
Oh, okay.
Ah, okay.
So, that's all they asked was for us to, obviously, if we've come across one, we're gonna take care of it.
Okay.
So, a, a major one, obviously. Anything close to the creeks or anything, that was the top priority. But, yeah, mainly, they're asking us to give them a list, a rating list of our collection system condition.
Okay, very doable.
Maple Street that we just completed last year was actually one of the worst lines to, yeah, so we're working up to not just making a list. The more I look at this, there's actually more that are gotta do, there's actually, it would have been easier to just tell you the ones that are gotta do. So, yeah, the complaint, the river wet stuff, the infringement permits, I have to deal with those, there's some big PG&E incremental permits coming up. Landfill closure is ongoing, that's something that we still have to deal with.
Is that a you and a finance department thing?
Andrea's mostly working on that, and the county's started contributing, and we have a really good consultant that's helping us with that. Right now, EDA's been great, so, but it's still, you know, landfill's always been just sort of a, kind of a thorn in our side, we're always dealing with something on that, so it's, it's still gonna be a time.
Page one. It's about three quarters of the way down, page one.
Yeah. And then back, there's still more. The, the solar PPA negotiations, that's ongoing, and the East Valley Commercial Bridge, especially the East Valley Bridge.
Wait, now, I don't see where you are.
Sorry, so, East Valley Bridge is about mid, middle, the very bottom, so the PPA, those are two things we have to.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Start it, we need to grant process on East Valley Bridge, and replacing that bridge is like 10 years out. We don't want to put it off any longer, it's.
So, you're saying both of those are must do?
Yes.
Okay, you're right, we could have just said which ones are.
There's like five of them.
So far, I only see one that, that we've said, well, we could wait until now.
Yeah, I think that's it.
You're done? Okay, and enough of these projects are to go before I get to you. All of these enterprise accounts, or how much of this is general fund?
Combination. Most of this is not general fund.
Okay. It's just a matter of having the people and the time to do it, right?
Yes, yeah.
So, it's water, wastewater, and some of it's maybe, is there any?
Yeah, grant funded, enterprise, and house.
Mr. May. So, the one that you didn't mention, I think, was Creekside Drive improvements, is that correct? And you mentioned, you have written here that it's budgeted for this fiscal year, but the design work has not yet started.
Yeah.
Is it maybe reasonable to tell the folks on Creekside Drive that's not gonna happen this year?
Maybe, that one might be tied to some SB1 funding, too, actually, that was, if it is, we'll get it. It's a small job.
Okay.
I think it's not something we have to bid, hopefully.
Okay.
So, I, I need to check into the funding requirements. If it's something we have to throw together, we probably could.
Okay, so it's a maybe?
It's a maybe.
Okay.
Yes, we'll scrap it in.
Did you also, what, the West Mendocino drainage, did you mention that?
That's like another one that I'd love to work on, but I think we're resigned to try to put that, at least ourselves, we're putting that off.
Okay, so it can wait at least a while.
Are those who are watching on television able to hear these gentlemen okay?
Barry?
I was getting that sense from you.
If I have a vote, and I remind the staff, you could have microphone, or two, I need them later, their comments could help.
And Creekside could anyway, I guess, okay.
All right, Phil, it's your turn to grab the microphone, that sounds like it.
All the Main Street projects we're looking at on this north end.
Can you make, can you make reference to what attachment this would be?
We're still working on attachment C.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
The, the pavers, the trees, everything else we're looking at at this point, I've been watching Jeremy and his staff go through in their spare time, which they don't have, trying to get ahead of it, so when we do finally get the street as ours, we will be somewhat prepared. There's a lot to do. The trees and the pavers is gonna be a, we've been talking, and it, they've, they've done a lot of work, they've done, you know, where they're just waiting for something to do.
They being the engineering.
No, Caltrans needs to leave before we can touch a lot of this.
You're not talking about Caltrans, you're talking about our own staff have done a lot of.
They've done a lot prep work, and they've done a lot, you know, why they, they've been trying to fit things in, whether they're doing all these other projects, it's incredible what they do. Dusty jumps in and puts the grants and everything else, which is really great, but we can't keep, I, I, I love the grant stuff, but it kind of scares me because they're not gonna be there all the time. The trees is what I'm really concerned about right now, it's all about public safety right now, with Red Grove and what's happening down there. Just keep plugging along, keep darn, take care of what we can, and go from there. There's nothing major on here as far as I have at this point.
So, Bill, it, because I think it'll come out of your department, I'm assuming that, when is the relinquishment, at least at this point?
So, it's scheduled for March 26th.
So, I guess it's always been a concern, I know Larry's brought it up, but we will own part of the Signal at 20, and East Commercial in Maine and Sherwood will be ours. Have we looked into some, because I know you guys probably aren't signal electricians, right, that what we would need to.
We would have to contract out.
And that might be something that we probably want to put on our.
I have talked to a couple, or at least one contractor about it, and put fillers out, saying, hey, you know, think about this, what's coming up, but we're still a ways away, so.
So, it's this March, right?
It's really getting close at this point.
It's getting close, yeah.
But, right now, we're under contract with Caltrans right now, as far as what we're spinning for them now. I think if we had to, we'd probably increase that.
Yeah, we could continue to contract with Caltrans.
Contract with what it is right now.
Question? Last night at Revide Ed, Jeremy and Dusty, you were thinking that it probably wasn't gonna happen until May, but now that we got the packet, are we assuming March 26th is correct?
If you say, if you heard May, the last I heard was March, and maybe you heard some information.
Yeah, the, last night, we had the Revide Ed meeting, and we were trying to assume a date as to when relinquishment may occur. The last meeting with Caltrans, which has been a couple months now, they identified the end of March. Last night, I wasn't aware that we had gotten the relinquishment contract, I'll call it, and so that's why we thought maybe that March date was gonna get pushed out a little bit.
Right.
But, brand new news update, we, we got a contract, and it got Jeremy's inbox yesterday, so.
And they're, and they're thinking they're gonna stick to the March 26th?
That's what I've heard from Kathy.
Okay, great, yeah, thank you.
Not you, the other Kathy, Caltrans Kathy.
So, Bill, again, not, not that I, it sounds like that's about it, but you heard today about, it sounds like Stephanie's gonna be chatting with Mr. Grossman about his ideas, and you told us about the dog park water thing that.
I, I kind of wanted to go back to the skate park, because Bill and I have talked about that, and he had some ideas, and I would love it if you would share those.
We were looking at several different audiance, we're looking at something a little more stable, a little more metal, but we're talking about pushing the price up more, we're talking about metal. The fabric looks really nice, it's nice colors, you can change this and that for the shade covers, but I run back into problems of what's gonna last, you know, what's gonna give us the most money down the line as far as survival rate? I couldn't keep a body down there for all that one time, so, we'll get there, we'll come up with something.
And I think Bill had some specific suggestions for the shape of it that we wanted to share with you.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I always welcome public, private partnerships, because it's the only way we sometimes can get things done, is, you know, joining forces, and I know you don't like grants, but I gotta tell you, the reason I wanted to jump on the grant thing, whereas we saw other cities getting stuff done with grants, even though I agree with you, Bill, that sometimes they come and they go, and after they're gone, we have to make sure that we, we can sustain whatever we build with the grant, so, the days of free money, I think, are gone, so.
Yeah. The other thing I wanted to make sure we touched upon is the trees in Red Grove, you folks did a tour, we did get a proposal from Family Tree, and it was for a little under $20,000, just to do a study of the trees. Not touching the trees, just doing the study. So, now we're looking at, we do have this urban forestry grant that actually has a component in there for studying trees, and we're now looking at maybe some of that, part of that grant can go towards looking at the trees in Red Grove, depending on the parameters of the grant.
Are we gonna discuss that expenditure further?
Oh, oh, yeah.
Good, because I have some, some thoughts on that.
Yeah, yeah, no, and, and I wanted to kind of explore to see what the grant can do in terms, because we'll, you have another contractor for the grant, maybe that can take on some of that, but if we can't, we have to, during our budget process and all that, we need to talk about how we're gonna fund that, so.
It, it'd really be nice to do the trees in a real section area and work our way through the park, just so we don't do any damage to trees that are already planted or were going to plant, by other trees falling at the same time. There's a lot more to it than just going out and checking things, so, we'll get there.
And just to be clear, you're, you're suggesting that because we want to avoid the situation that we had in City Park where we basically clear cut, right? We don't want to do that at Red Grove.
Yeah, no, that was not the, when we did that, that was, we were pretty much forced into that by the insurance company at that point.
Right, right.
That was supposed to be a 10-year plan, or actually, another five-year plan, that was, we were talking about setting up and going into when we found so much damage, it was pretty scary.
So, I, I don't see the studying and possible next steps.
It's not on this list, yeah.
Yeah, we learned about this after, after we did this list.
So, we're adding another issue to this list.
Yes, this has to be added, and it's important, it's an important issue.
That's on our list there, tree, yeah, I think you got it, tree care, okay.
And, and Bill, you, you didn't mention the, the crosswalk at State Street and 101, 101 Burger, but I know that, you know, it's something that you've been working on.
I had the solar panel lighting, flashing lights with the yellow crosswalk signs and everything, I, actually, when Caltrans was doing sidewalks, that area, had them put stubs in the ground for that area, just so we could do that, what, a year ago now?
Yeah.
So.
So, with relinquishment right around the corner, do you think this is something that realistically can stay on the list for the next year or two years?
Once we get it relinquished, I could probably have the, I, it's in a, on a pallet in several boxes in my shop.
Okay.
Weight can go up.
Great. He'll go in within 30 days. Thank you.
No, it, it's gonna go up as soon as I get.
Where's the, where's the parks improvement grant on this attachment C, I'm not seeing it.
Is it on an urban forestry project?
No, I'm referring to the.
It's not, I don't think it's on there.
The parks grant that we've had discussion, public is giving input, we've talked about it several times before.
Yeah.
Keep looking. Yeah, but in terms of, of goal setting, it doesn't appear to have made the list for the Public Works Water and Engineering Department, it's certainly part, it should be on that, that list. I mean, part of what we heard this evening in terms of skate park, in my mind, falls underneath Parks Grant, and we know that there's grant funding that's out there, it's just a matter of whether or not the city wants to pursue it, and. And this is our opportunity as a council to state whether or not we feel like that's a goal, whether or not this is something that the community wants.
And so grants are sort of Dusty's, I'll let Dusty talk about it.
So you don't want it on?
No, it's a Dusty issue because it's a grant.
Okay, I, I thought, okay, so I was a little confused because when we talked about it before, we were talking about how it has so much tentacle, there's so many tentacles to that particular grant that it would take time from these departments. So I thought that it might be on their list as well, but, okay, as long as it's on your list.
Well, I think we need to add it.
We need to, it's not on there now, we didn't, so when we had our grants report, I think we were, we talked about the fact that we have applied for it and received more grants than we thought we were going to get. And every single grant requires sort of care and feeding and they can't just sort of, it's not just money we get to keep. It's a, there's a, there's a staff component, significant staff component to every grant. And we have, I know we, one of the goals was, last year was to have a grants report to talk about that and to talk about what we've been able to achieve and the fact that we need to move from grant acquisition to grant management. And so I need Dusty, and so Dusty kind of explained that and we talked about the constraints and of our, you know, because we don't want to, we don't want to apply for grants that we can't do. So I think that Dusty has a really good handle on what can and can't be done, so I'm going to let him speak to that.
I didn't know if Bill was done.
Yeah, before you switch departments there, I just wanted to just suggest that we put on the list things that are real doable and that we, you know, like, like the pedestrian crossing, you're ready to go on that. It'll be nice to have one and then two months from now or whenever, you know, after, after the relinquishment and we're able to do it, it'll be one of those, we did that one. So they, they don't show, some of those don't show up on the list and, and it's nice to pat ourselves on the back for the things we, because we didn't put them on the list because it was so easy, but, no, go ahead and put them on.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, it's all.
Nothing's easy, actually.
Okay, now it's Dusty's turn.
Dusty, you're Community Development Director. Just real quick, you know, just reiterating what Jeremy said. You know, even this does as a community development to list, it's very rare that any of these projects happen independent of, of the other departments. And so there's only a handful of us, really, we're a little bit of a skeleton crew, I would say. But the good news is we're all talented, dedicated and we get along with each other, so. But, you know, even though this is a community development list, again, there's work elements in here, sometimes quite substantial, that, that go along with that. So just want to make that point. Also, I just, before I go over the list, make the point that we have been extremely successful in getting grants. We were hoping to maybe bat 50%, we're batting 100%. That's great news. And then there's a report out and the, the council was very understanding when staff made the point that we've gone from grant writing to grant management. The concern, of course, is we spread ourselves too thin and we don't follow through on the promises we made when we took on the grant money and signed the contracts. And if we're not successful, then I wouldn't expect the cities to be successful in, in receiving future grant funds. There's, right, we're going through this goal-setting exercise, so we're, any good ideas that we think are worthy of being accomplished for this city, we want to put on the list. But of course, then it becomes important to prioritize that list and be realistic about what we can accomplish. With the grants that we've received for longstanding goals of the city, whether it was Rails with Trails project or recognizing the need and benefit of having more street trees. When we accomplish that 1.6 mile trail, when we accomplish planting another 150 trees in the city, that's a big workload then for Public Works to maintain those trees and maintain those trails. So, you know, I just want the, the council and the community to be understanding that, you know, we're, we're creating these amenities, but there's, you know, future maintenance costs to go along with that. And speaking of skeleton crews, that's true for the Public Works Department as well. And you've seen what happens when we don't properly maintain trees. We end up with situations like we faced at this park and now we're facing at the other park. So even though grant-funded got us the project, grant funding's probably not going to pay for the future maintenance. So as we look at revenue and all that kind of thing and costs going up, you know, we need to factor in that, you know, these amenities, these new trees are going to be a future cost to us. We don't have the staff necessarily to properly take care of it at this point, so that needs to be close on the mind of the council members, in my humble opinion. So I'm just going to go identify goals that are on Attachment B. I'll just go in the order from the top of the page to the bottom. But I'm only going to identify those that are not tied to grant funding and therefore have deadlines attached to them or projects that we've already made substantial progress on that maybe would be silly to sort of stop and turn around at this point. So I'll identify projects that don't meet those two criteria. And I think the majority of those are all being funded through general fund dollars. So the staff, and what I identify, it's not me saying it's not a priority, I'm just, again, identifying those that, I guess, have some flexibility as to whether we move them further down the priority list or replace them with other goals. Established development impact fees, and if you want me to describe what these goals are further, I will, otherwise they're written down.
The, the ones you're calling attention to are ones that are not grant, covered by grant funding?
And we haven't made substantial progress on already.
So they're, they're adding, yeah, okay.
And this would be a general fund expense because it would require hiring an outside consultant, a development impact fee?
So established development impact fees, promote housing development, that's the third one down. The bottom of the page, the food truck ordinance. On page two, the very last goal, review of city alley networks, potential abandonment for adjacent owners. And again, if you want me to describe these any further, just, just ask me, otherwise I'll just mention the bullet point. On page three, second item, the cellular right-of-way agreement. Going further down, established contract planning services, the van hotel sewer and water billing.
Why, why is sewer and water billing under community development?
It's going to be another one that, that'll be a group effort. It's already been meetings between the finance director, building official, myself, Scott Herman here, our utility superintendent. And I, I think they're wanting me for my writing skills, maybe, or I don't know why.
Yeah, this is a big crossover event. Because it, it fits along with development and housing development and the whole, how we build for sewer and water. And we've, we need to also update all of our, basically our, our regulations and laws regarding that to conform with changes in housing law. And that hits Dusty hard. We were recently taken to small claims court by someone who didn't like their sewer billing. We did prevail.
I think I was the one that mistakenly spoke up and said, well, maybe we should just change the code. Tagged myself and hit at that point, yeah. And then the, the last one is on page four, the update of planning and building permit applications. That one, that one came from, from me and it's just recognizing that our applications are out of date and, you know, it's not necessarily a high priority, it's, it's just that the applications don't get at the information that we need from applicants. So it just kind of creates a little bit of an inefficiency, but.
And then the general plan land use element would be in the same category. We don't, we haven't progressed and we don't have?
Correct, yeah. It is, it is captured on the, on Attachment A, but it's, it's called like a zoning code update. So it's typically, with the zoning code update, a lot of that stuff would be based on consistency with your land use element. So there's some things you might touch without necessarily wanting or needing to update your general plan. But a lot of those, a lot of, typically before you do a comprehensive update, you would have at least updated the, the land use element, if not the, the entire housing.
And there's certain limits on how many zoning changes you can make without, in a year, without?
Correct, the state limits how many times you can amend the general plan per year.
It would really make sense to do it comprehensively, but it's also a big project.
And I, and then that one specifically, if we identified that task, it would probably, one, I think it probably wouldn't fit in with everything else that were sort of mandatory. Those things that are on the list that I didn't call out just now.
Is there a, is there a time when you do, you are absolutely going to have to redo the land use element? I mean, like you had to do the housing update, you had to do the safety update?
At this point, we've only been updating the general plan elements as required by state law. And as I'm sitting here talking to you, I'm not aware of a situation where we would be required by state law to update. The state recommends that you update your general plan every 10 years, but it's a recommendation. And I'll mention, a lot of, a lot of my time and others is spent on dealing with state mandated stuff. So there's some things that are on this list that I don't think necessarily needed to be a priority for Willetts. Certainly weren't identified by the community or the council, yet we get to spend significant time addressing them, yeah, so. Just a little fun fact.
Could you spend a minute talking about your, you've done regarding housing and I've heard from the council how much they care about housing. And I know you've really focused a lot of time on that and I would love to?
Yeah, and I tried to capture that a little bit with the promote housing development, the third item on page one of Attachment B. And I appreciate council members, Rodriguez's, comments about, you know, a lot of the problems we face, you know, it comes down to lack of available housing. And so I, you know, I think staff recognizes that too. And so you're aware that, you know, we have a number of applications that we're currently processing that are hopefully going to recognize, you know, a decent number of, of new housing units in the community. You know, we're looking to support new housing opportunities by looking at expanding the city limits. And so hopefully we'll have some good information prepared for, for the community to look at and the council to make some decisions on. We have completed two updates to the housing element in the last year and a half. And we got the letter yesterday saying that it's actually officially approved, so congratulations to the council. And that identifies an opportunity for over 600 units to be built just within the city limits of Willetts. Again, we're not, we don't build housing, we just make sure that those opportunities exist. I mean, a lot of the properties aren't for sale necessarily. And then recently, what we've done is because we're, we've, we've done a bunch of zoning changes to make it an easier permitting pathway for, for housing development. The council's really made some, what I think are, are smart decisions to, to help promote housing. But we've actually now made an effort to reach out to experienced housing developers and talk to them. Because, you know, as we go through this exercise and create these opportunities, it becomes important to talk to those folks to make sure that we're creating the opportunities that they want to take advantage of. And so that's led to some tours of town, it's gotten some excitement, it's led to them looking at purchasing some property in Willetts. So we're tackling on, on that front as well. We're, you know, looking, yeah, anyways.
All right. Did you have anything, Davey?
So Dusty basically covered, I'm under the Community Development Department, so he covered my things. So I don't have anything that's basically needs to be done. I have wish lists online, which is, my main wish list is for, to update our building, planning, permitting applications and by doing that, kind of step us into the 21st century and purchase some software to track this. We do everything by pen and paper, everything's in the cameras. Dealing with other agencies and sending reports and, you know, doing our reports for you, having that software to have the data available finger button push instead of handwriting permits, peeling them off, sending them to the assessors and re-typing it in for their reports. It would just be, it'd be a great advantage. The software we're looking at also has code enforcement options on it. So it would be, it would greatly increase our response time for basic code enforcement requests and the ability to respond and stay on top of that stuff. But that's a wish list, we have it.
So as far as code enforcement, that would be your?
Yes, and it's, it's a very friendly software to use. I, I looked at three different versions of software, all with different complexities. I've kind of chosen one that I'm going to recommend. It's actually the cheapest one for the ability to use the software. It takes the least amount of staff, which is the building department's staff, it's right here. So it would greatly increase efficiency and tracking plans and tracking permits. Yeah, I think it's going to pay, it would pay for itself and basically just being able to track permits when they expire, being able to reach out and have people renew their permits on a timely basis. That's a wish list, it's not a complete necessity.
Two questions. One is Van Hotel and the other one is the building over by the medical offices that I guess doesn't have a business license yet. Life break, yeah, I never know what they're called. Those, those two, it says, Van Hotel is in the list and says that you're trying to get permission to.
Yeah, so we wrote, we wrote the owner of Van Hotel a letter requesting access. Basically, permission to let us in, inspected by me and the fire chief. So I recently tracked that letter, it's in certified mail. It was not accepted. You, they're going to attempt to re-give the letter to him. If he rejects it again, basically we're going to take that as non-compliance. We gave him 10 days to contact us to inspect the building. If he doesn't respond, we're going to go and basically ask for a warrant to end the building. And Chief Wilkes is actually going to head that up as a fire safety hazard. And so that is in the process and I know it's been fits and starts with that building for decades.
It's so visible to the community and everybody's so, you know, frustrated by it, yeah.
And so I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't catch the full question on the?
Well, I'm just wondering if that facility has, gets some kind of inspection? And then are they conducting business there? Do they have a business license now?
So currently, the building is still under construction. It's really close to being finished. We, the last inspection was there, elected for final. They have ADA parking to put in and a few more issues before that building is filed. At that point, once they have a, the building's filed, they attempt to issue that sort of occupancy. At that point in time, they can apply for their business license. And at that point in time, basically, we will know what they are planning to do in there.
Thank you.
So I'm a little confused. That was, the Van Hotel was one of the items that Dusty identified as having flex, so not necessarily being on the priority list, but it sounds like it's actually already in process?
It's in process, yes.
So?
Yeah, I probably would say we're, we are. We have safety concerns and we want to make sure we can go in and move them out.
Thank you.
Chief?
We are, yes, the police? So we have a few goals listed here, but before I get to those, we are at a critical staffing level at the police department. We are having trouble hiring people and retaining people. I gave a 90-day notice to, that I was retiring, I have 40 years in the retirement system. And HR, the city manager, have been diligently trying to get applicants for the police chief's position and have not had one applicant, which is pretty similar to some of the problems we have with, with regular staffing. To, to give you a kind of a, a brief overview of, of the pay situation, I make twice of what mostly officers make, the police officers. A deputy after two years in Snowdon County makes what I make. So it's, it's hard for us to get? So it's hard for us to get people. A senior member of In-N-Out Burger makes what our officers make. I know, I know that the other staff is having the same types of problems, but we are so short now that I have to work four shifts a week, and I'm trying to do my chiefly duties and get some of these projects done before I leave. I'm working, I'm not, I don't want to say how many hours I'm working, because it's not like a complaint, but I'm trying to get the stuff done before I leave. So we're at a critical, critical juncture here. When I leave at the beginning of March, another officer has put his notice in, he's leaving too, that will leave us with four police officers, and I'm including lieutenants and sergeants. So we will have four officers. What the city manager has allowed us to do is to modify the schedules somewhat to try to fit all that, to try to get people days off, et cetera. In February, we have several officers that are scheduled to work seven, 10-hour days in a row with a day off and then come back to work. So the point is, it's very critical. So our main goal is to maintain this police department and not lose it. Also, the city manager has allowed us, in March, I am working out deals with other cities to have their officers assist us and fill some shifts on an overtime basis. One more comparison, Ukiah PD, they make 30 to 40% more than our officers, and they're also offering a $20,000 sign-on bonus for any officer that leaves another department to go to. So it's very hard for us to compete. City manager has been working with the POA to get some incentives going. We have some funds that are not general money funds that we are allowed to spend to try to get some people to stay. So with that, with all that said, our goals, we, and I reported this out before, but we finally, we have the ham radio all installed for the next emergency we have.
Does she have a document that he has in front of him that I don't have?
So, if you look at Attachment D, H1, it's a goal, and this is more of an HR, city hall goal, is to hire a police chief and to work with the police union on incentives. That's not specifically my department goal, that's them.
Just kidding, I'm a thunder.
I am so sorry, Karen, I apologize, I owe you lunch or something. So, so the ham radio thing, that's done. The only part that's not done is the appendice for the EOP, the EOP being the Emergency Operating Plan, to coordinate the local ham volunteers which have come forward to assist. My goal is to have the EOP done before I leave. I will not have the appendices done, but it'll, it should be before you sometime in February for your approval of the EOP. The appendices are, don't get approved by you, but they're constantly changing, because each department has input of what they can provide, et cetera, on and so forth. So, I am, looking very forward to getting that done and to you. We haven't, the Traffic Safety Committee has not met for a year, and during my time left, it's, we are not going to be able to meet. There are just not enough time in a week to put this all together. So, questions?
Yep.
Yes, ma'am.
By utilizing Fort Bragg, isn't that going to cost us more money?
It's going to cost us a lot more money.
Okay, and then...
And same with Lakeport.
Right, and since we're, we go dark, we, we're not sta, are we staffing 24 hours a day?
We are staffing 24 hours a day, but not with police officers.
Okay, so are we seeing cost savings from that?
We are seeing some cost savings.
And what's the savings that we're seeing?
About $16,000 a month.
Okay, and how is that savings being put back into any, anybody in the police department to ensure that we have retention?
We have salary savings too, because we don't have officers. So we would, we would love to be able to get enough officers, we don't have salary savings. I don't know the point I was going to make here.
That is the money that we're using to hire new, to officers from Fort Bragg and other locations on a, that's actually what we're using?
So we still, even when we hire these officers, and hope, we have people in background, hopefully, some of them will be able to get on board. We will have a trainee who should be ready by the end of March, so that'll be another We have two others that are academy, and then we have one other that's an academy, two others that are, one other that's an academy graduate and one that's a distant lateral, he hasn't been a police officer for a while, but he's considered a lateral, that it will take about six months to get, once, once the background's done, psych and medical are done, and they're hired, it will take about six months for them to be on the street by themselves. And then we have one that we're sending to the academy, and that's a longer term, so that'll be a year. And we hope to send them to the academy in April, it'll be a year before they're on the street. And we're still recruiting, trying to get people to apply. It's very difficult, it's, we are the least paid agency, same with the staff here, least paid agency in this area of Northern California. So, you know, when somebody wants to be a police officer, they don't tend to come to us. We try to recruit them, we go to them and tell them the benefits of working in this wonderful place, to try to get them.
It just seems to me that we're, we're putting a patch in place by using Fort Bragg, but in the three years that I've been on the council, we have just continually, every year, seen the police department decline. We're going to be without a police chief soon, we're down to four police officers. This needs to be a high priority, when, I mean, we're talking about individual projects, but in terms of departments, I mean, your department seems to be in a crisis.
Right, if we lose enough people and we can't, and we don't get help from other departments, it's potential that the sheriff's department could take over, it's going to cost a lot more money, and you're going to have little control. And you're going to have a lot less services.
Okay, thank you.
So I also wanted to just throw in there that we are actually not unique.
No, we are not.
We are not unique at all. Ukiah, although they pay so much more than we do, I think it's now up to $30,000 that they're, as a bonus pack, they are having a heck of a time, because it's quality of life issue along with the money. We've actually gotten some recruits who preferred us to them, for various reasons. I did want to say that I did talk to someone this week that looks like he may work out as an interim police chief. We'll be meeting with him, the chief and I will be meeting with him the first week of February, and very excited about that. He was actually referred to us by Bob Proll, and who worked with him for six months as an interim. And so, that is very, we have high hopes there.
Yes, it is, just to reiterate, she said, police departments all over the country are having the same problems, so it's exacerbated by us having such low pay. So we have to, we have to explain and recruit the people why we are a preferred choice. Now, we've always, even, even when there were tons of applicants, we have always, along with other departments of our size, been a training ground. So it wasn't uncommon for us to hire somebody and they stay only three years or so. That is very common, but now we're losing them even sooner, so.
We're, do you have anything else, Scott?
Yep.
We're getting close to that witching hour for ourselves.
And I can go through the rest of this list.
If you could, but, and then I want to wrap up.
There was a question from the public?
Did we have a question?
Yeah. One way you could go on that approach, when I, you know, when you guys are going to decide when you're going to get the new chief and who you're going to hire, but the way I do with construction, if I really need somebody, I need a lot of crews, I'll, I'll go get their main informant, which, if that's the guy that everybody likes that they work for, those guys will come along with them. So, that could be an approach in the, in the chief process, if it's someone that, you know, other than the wages possibly got to go up, but he might bring five guys back with him, and you might have, you know, so I'm just thinking about when you do the hiring process.
Well, we're willing to take it, we take everything into consideration. I'm going to tell you that even the interim chief, I'm concerned about is he going to have housing. So, you know, we're, we're looking to see if we can find someplace where they can, you know, when you've got a two-year police officer making $22 an hour, you know, would you put your life on the line for $22? I don't think so. So, you know, our guys work really hard, they work really long hours, they don't see their families, you know, when you're working, like you said, seven days straight, 10 hours a day, you have one day off, you still have reports to do, and you've got beside your family, and then you come back to work again, and it's very difficult. And I've been here though over three years, and I've been working on recruitment, retention, and hiring, and it's, it's just not, it's, we're not getting good candidates. So, I mean, even if we raise the money, I don't know if we'll get that great of candidates. And it takes so much time and money to hire somebody, and you get through the, you go through the background, and then, or the polygraph and the background, and then you start to go towards the psych, and then they, they don't pass, and wow, you've just put out a couple thousand dollars just on that one individual, and then you've got to restart. I've spent a huge amount of money on recruitment, and advertising, and the medical, and all that, so, I mean, I'm actually over my boardet, and it's over six months.
I just want to point out that we do get some good candidates. We have not lowered our standards for hiring, you know, but we do lose probably 75% of the people we put in background.
I just have a quick question. If we were able to put a half-cent sales tax on the November ballot and it passed, would some of that go to raising salaries for police?
I would propose that, certainly.
Well, that was something I was going to bring up, is that whether it be skate parks or actually, and not just salaries, but, you know, I think I wrestled with the idea that, you know, again, the whole time I was chief, I was cutting, and it was really depressing, I'll be honest with you. And one of the reasons I got on here was that I wanted to do everything I could to promote businesses coming here, and I pride. And, you know, whether it was bothering Safeway to put signs up on the road or whatever, but, and a lot of people here on this council have done a lot of that kind of stuff too. So, I'm not discounting my colleagues here, but in the end, it comes down to generating revenue. And again, I think, Stephanie did the presentation with how we get money, and, you know, I have a lot of wishes, but I think, I think Greta had talked to me about what, what happens at the goal setting, and I said, well, we put some stuff up here, we do this, and I said, bring some open minds to this thing, bring some ideas. I said, I'm not going to tell you, don't speak up on something, and if the public has some good ideas, because maybe somebody has some idea that we haven't been around, but also be prepared to temper that with the fact that, again, we only have so much money, and at a certain point, whether it's water, sewer, police, et cetera, or recreation, et cetera. I mean, that's why I had the fire chief speak up about why we were giving up that money, you know, that, yeah, could we be using that in other parts, yes. Is some of it going to fund police and, and yeah, it's going into general funds, so it kind of gets spread out there. Is it targeted specifically in any one thing? I really hope that when the marijuana thing passes, that it would be to the point that I wouldn't have to think about closing the pool. But I'll be honest with you, that if we don't raise money at some point, we're going to have to look at some really deep cuts, and some got-to-dos and some, sorry, we can't fund that anymore. And I know you said, Mr. Rissman, you don't mind putting us on the spot, but it may be the decision we make up here is what do we cut? And that's the part that I can, I want to temper out there to the community, is that we want to make sure that we can provide quality of life here and services. And part of that involves keeping people, but also part of it involves being able to do things in the community, roads, recreation, et cetera. So, at this point, I'm going to let Stephanie kind of blow through her list, and then we're going to have to bring this back to a later meeting first.
I think the rest of the administrative list is Karen's and my list, and they're all, I think they're all must-dos, except for the cultural arts, which I hope doesn't drop through the cracks. But it's a, it's a matter of staff time. And the community's been generous with donations for some of that, but there's a staff time component, and so if we don't have the staff time to help work on those things, we're not going to be able to do them. Brooktrails, I'm happy to say that we're nearing close to a settlement there. I think we're going to be approaching you with some good news soon, but we'll see. And we have just a lot of hiring, we have a mid-year budget coming up. In February, we're going to be coming back to you, and that's all I have to say. It's been, REMIF is, is our, is our risk pool, and insurance pressures have been extreme. Our insurance has pretty much doubled in the last, just the last year. And I think a lot of you have experienced that with your home insurance. Well, the same thing happened to the city. We're all, we're all sharing in the pain of being in a, in a fire area and with a tremendous risk in California, and that has taken an enormous hit. And so our risk pool that we are a part of is actually talking about merging with another risk pool. They're asking for lots and lots of data that is putting another strain on administration to try to pull that, pull those numbers together. I know Karen's involved, and I'm involved with that, and Amy is involved with that, so. More must-dos.
The other thing I didn't see on here was the transfer of payroll to ADP, which is a must-do. I'm doing everything I can to work on the systems to get it happening within a week, but I don't, it's a very difficult system to work in, so, and that needs to be added on there.
I think it's going to be a lot.
And then I'd like to just say, as a public announcement, if you're looking for a job at the city, I have an associate, I have an associate in the new position, police officers, dispatcher, and we are going to do an internal CSO too. We have an accountant, a part-time and a full-time accountant. So, if you're interested, K. Stevenson, S.T.E.V.E.N.S.O.N., at cityofwillets.org, will come in and get an application, and give you a job description, and we'll talk.
I have one other question on that, on that list. The conservation easement, I know that was contracted out, and he was going to do some initial work and then see if it made sense to keep going. Are we, where are we on that?
He's put about, not a lot of time in right now, it's just a bit of title report and just figuring out who owns what, and what the background is. I'm managing that project, because there are swaps, so I'm doing that one.
And that's a revenue enhancement opportunity that we think could be significant.
Yes, we hope, I mean, that has real potential, you know, in a few years to really develop and get quite a bit of money.
Yeah. So... It's putting our watershed land into conservation easements, and then you get some revenue benefits from doing that. But, so he's just doing some initial research to see whether it actually is something we're eligible to do.
Actually, the first thing you need to do is develop a parcel of land that you can sort of market, and that takes a lot of title reports, and we haven't done that in ever. So it's going to the title company and doing that, so he's worked on that. And it's also, he's done some initial meetings with potential groups who'd be interested in purchasing the easement, so that, that would, which would bring us the revenue. And he's good at that. He's done it before, and so we're, have our fingers crossed to see what the market is.
But it's not enough to balance our budget?
Not right now. Maybe, maybe in a few years, it will be. It could, it could result in substantial cash, depending, but we just need to investigate the market, but it's certainly something to pursue.
All right. We'll have these, it'd be helpful if some of this could be typed up and sent to us, and then...
Absolutely, I'll do tomorrow.
Yeah, not tomorrow, but...
What we can do is agendize it for a future staff meeting, and we can update these lists, and add another list of some of the things that the community has, has requested, and put that also on the list, and then...
Community and the council members.
And the council members, what... And the council members, what you've heard, and then.
And number them somehow, so we can find them quickly.
So, and then, so we won't bother with this list anymore, we're just going to be not bothered with this, we're just going to look at our to-do list and talk about prioritization and what to do. So we're doing mid-years in February. I want to bring this back in February because June wants to hurry up and do her budget, because we're pretty committed to keeping on track with that, with our budget work.
Do you want to speak about your wants?
Well, we're going, if we want to go through the agenda, we can go through, I have my city manager thing I can talk about. I've got a couple other things that are kind of exciting that I want to talk about.
Go back to our agenda, we only have 15 minutes.
That's good. I mean, I can go real quick about, if you want to.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. First thing, our bond refinancing that you all voted for, we did complete the refinancing, we had projected a 2.7% rate, we were able to get a 2.3% rate, which is fantastic, but, and that's been complete, and it closed, it closed last week. We have PG&E, Mr., his name just escaped me, asked us to amend our letter to PG&E asking for generators at the substation.
Almeda.
And Mr. Almeda, well, lo and behold, I received a call as I was on a plane to Nashville from PG&E, and they're going to put generators at the substation. And they are going to be currently working on that, and I'm so excited. So, and the main goal for PG&E is to help areas that were impacted by PSPS, but yet were not impacted by the windstorms. So I'm so thrilled. Anyway, I told Mr. Almeda he is really happy. Don't forget about the census. And lastly, I want to talk about budget awards. Was really thrilled, we found out this week that we were the recipient of two awards for our budget. This is a first time for Willets, and it's pretty exciting. For the Government Finance Officers Association, we were awarded Distinguished Budget Presentation Award, presented to us, something to be very proud of. June, she spearheaded this effort, but all the staff worked on it. We helped her periphery, we helped her, all the departments worked really hard on their budgets. Something we're even more proud of, because June says this is like super rare, is the California Society of Municipal Finance Officers awarded us an Operating Budget Excellence Award for the fiscal year 2019-2020. Again, this is usually an award after you apply for it, it will take three to six years to get, we got it in our first year, so.
With no changes?
With no changes. They asked for no changes to our budget, they said, "Just send us the medal award." Anyway, that's all I have.
Unless any council members have anything?
Oh, are we doing council member, committee reports? Let's see, Rebite Ed met yesterday, and we discussed trees and papers for Main Street. It looks like the city staff has recommended to do those two together, the papers and the trees, for minimum disruption to Main Street businesses. So although we won't be doing it right after the relinquishment, we'll be doing it in the fall, which is the best time to plant trees, so public and business owners can look forward to getting rid of those bark strips later in the year. The other thing I wanted to mention is Museum Advisory Board met last week, and the museum has decided to move their free day from Wednesday night, which was not being well utilized by the community, to Saturdays, which is the best day for everyone in our community to go visit the museum. It will be free one Saturday a month, starting in February. So take your family, check it out, it's a great museum, and that's all.
Sabrina?
We've already covered everything.
Yes, EDFC Director Heather Gerwitz resigned a week ago, and we had a quick meeting that was basically, you know, how are we going forward? But it kind of crept up on us rather by surprise. And so EDFC does have a very good lead for interim director, somebody who has worked for, I think, West Company for like 17 years, and will really help that collaboration between West Company and EDFC. And I think that'll help EDFC overall, but it's going to be a little bit of an adjustment for a while. The solid waste management authority did not meet in January, but a couple of people, myself included, are going to meet with them, and we're looking at recycling, what the challenges that we're going through, not just us, but everybody on recycling, and also trying to reduce waste in general. The zero-waste folks are part of that meeting, so we're moving, kind of having some meetings and looking at things that our community can do to reduce the waste stream.
Is Jed Diamond is our representative for Third District, and he is now the Vice Chairman of Major B. And he wasn't even there, he got elected. The supervisors on the amount of money that they've taken in for Major B is right at 13 million bucks, so it's going down the really pretty good way. That's about it, other than the hospital and the coast, and Ukiah are still on the list for Major B for the mental health, so.
That's our hospital, for locations, right?
Yep.
And I wasn't able to attend, normally me and Larry go, and Larry covered, and again, thank you Sabrina for going to the ambulance.
Oh, thanks, Greta.
Actually, I talked to Kathy, and I go, "How's this Brown Act thing work?" I talked to Larry, and I was.
Well, I didn't speak, I just sat there, so even if we all showed up, it would have been fine.
Yeah, well, no, it had more to do with, how could I communicate? Greta communicated to me, but I didn't communicate further, I just, Larry did cover, so we didn't have a discussion, and so that presents an issue sometimes when unexpected meetings pop up to try and cover, so I appreciate that. I'm going to be heading to Sacramento on Friday to go to Lega City's policy committee meeting, and hopefully they'll give us an update on the governor's budget there, so I'll bring back whenever I can. And they usually have community development stuff. By the way, I do that on my dime or what I get from being on the city council, because we don't have the money for that, so. One of these days, when I hand that over, I'll let one of you guys do that, so.
And I'm going to be going to the planning directors and council members on planning issues on February 1st. I don't know if you're planning to go to that or not, but I am planning to go to it in Santa Rosa. And it's, I guess, a four, six-hour meeting, and I hope to learn a lot.
Well, at this point, motion to adjourn.
Can we do council member recommendations?
Oh, okay.
I have one, I didn't want to do it under committee reports, but under council member reports and recommendations, I do have two things. One is I would like to see the council get, we're responsible for setting the goals and oversight, and it can be challenging sometimes when there's a staffing change, and we're, and that staffing change has an impact on our ability to achieve our goals. Like you said, we're a small staff, it can be embarrassing, you might say, when we hear in the public that we lost, like, key people in the department. Like, I didn't like hearing about the chief's departure last minute at a meeting, or hearing about the loss of an engineer, and then worrying about, like, what's going to happen. I'd like to see that when we do, you know, maybe it's once a month, maybe it's once a week, but there was always kind of this standard protocol that if something significant happened in the city, we were somehow, as councils, like alerted, like, when the trees fell in the park, you could expect that we would receive some kind of information, like, "The trees fell in the park, not to worry, nobody was harmed," so that when people came to us, that we could give some answers. So I would like to see a little bit more communication, I'd ask for the council's support, and getting more communication in terms of being alerted of those major types of events that have the potential to kind of get lost in the community through that concept of telephone, and to know when we lose staff. If the police department at this point, if they lose more, I think that's kind of important, we should know. If we lose an engineer, I don't want to hear about it secondhand, because I'm already thinking, I'm in panic mode, thinking, "Okay, what about this project or that project?" There has to be some kind of logical way where we can just be informed of staffing that is going to affect what we're working on here.
Well, I don't think I want to point out, sometimes that staffing gets announced because the individual employee either chooses to announce it early, and sometimes they want to be able to make the announcement to the whole council.
But I never hear about staffing changes unless it's through a community member, or it happens at the podium, and I'm saying that I need more. I'm asking that the rest of the council would support more information. That's what I'm asking for.
I think especially if it's already essentially public, in other words, if a staff member is talking about quitting or changing their status or something, they may not want it to go public at all, and so it's still a private matter, and we shouldn't be informed. But if somebody actually is leaving and they're a key part of the city's functioning, I think it'd be good to hear about that in an email, and then we don't communicate with each other, because that would violate the Brown Act, but at least we would know, so somebody doesn't come to us and say, "I heard such and such," and going, "I didn't hear about that."
It makes us look kind of foolish.
It does. It's embarrassing.
Yeah, I think that should be standard.
I actually told someone that the sustainability issue was going to come back to council. I didn't know that the person who was presenting it had actually already left the city. So then I had to go back to that person and say, "My bad, it's not coming back."
And I apologize, I was told before the meeting, that's why we pulled back, and I, it was last minute, it wasn't.
Very last minute.
I think what we're asking, though, is that we all want to be in the loop on information, and some of us feel like we're not receiving information that affects the decisions that we make here, so we would like to.
Or affects our communications with the public.
Yeah. And then the, the second thing I want to state is that you all had a chance to put your goals on here, and I heard council members list some of the goals they had, but I just want to express that I feel very frustrated that I asked for the recreation grant last year and asked for the recreation grant this year. And I heard city managers say, "Well, we already decided that, that's not going to happen." No, but this is our opportunity to set our goals going forward. This is a goal that is, it's my goal, and I've heard from the community, and they've expressed that this is one of their goals. If you all don't want to pull a little star next to it when we go and we rate how we want to do it, that's fine, but I feel like I have the right to place it on the goal, and the community has the right to see whether or not you value that as a goal over something else. And however you place your little stars to say, "This is my first, second, third priority," I'm fine with that, but the fact that I've been shut down so quickly and not been allowed to say, as a city council member, that I'm the one who's participating with the rest of you to set policy, it bothers, it bothers me. And if we didn't do any other grants, and you told me we're doing no more grants, and you didn't do any other grants, I'd be okay with that, but in the last year, I've listened to, I can't even count how many grant applications you've asked us to approve, and I've approved them, but in the back of my mind, I was thinking to myself, "I thought we were only doing grant management, I thought we were only doing grant management, but why are we seeing another grant?" I got the logic of that one, I got the logic, so I did the right thing and I voted for it. But don't tell me we're only doing grant management if we're actually going to bring more grants our way and expect me to vote yes. I can't vote yes on them if you're telling me, "In this meeting, we're only doing grant management." There has to be room to at least hear what a council member, the community, has to say, whether the rest of the council members want to agree or not, I'm fine with that, but at least allow it to be one of the goals, and that's what we need to say.
I so apologize if you felt that way. I think it's absolutely essential that if, that that be on the list, and I did not mean to, if you felt through your shutdown, it was very inadvertent, and I apologize for that. I think that some of the grant approvals that you've gotten were applications that were actually submitted a while back, but we can certainly put that on the list.
That's all I.
And it's actually on the list, yeah. Yes, we did put it on the list. I was sort of just.
Do you want to have the same grant that, is what I've brought to us?
No, that's actually a different recreation grant. And it's, I think the grants discussion, just like the pavement, the pavement, not pavement, for sure, but the state of the pavement report is sort of its own sort of animal, and maybe we want to go through an exercise where we look at our grants, and just like we did, we had a grants report where we talked about grants.
Yeah, because I thought it was interesting that she was talking about the parkour, and you said, "Oh, I think we can get a grant for that," and there seemed to be some interest in that, and I was thinking, I thought we weren't doing grants, but it seems like we are sometimes doing grants, maybe because it was a smaller one, so I can see the logic in that, too, but I think we have the opportunity with that recreation grant, we could go small, we just don't want to.
Sure, absolutely.
We don't want to use our opportunity to get a grant to go too small, which is what I've heard in the past, too, so I'm just saying, let's keep that option open.
And it is on the list, we did write it down on the list.
Okay, that was all I had to say.
Yeah, no, it is absolutely.
And thank you for everybody's patience, because it is late. Thank you.
Thank you for coming and your comments, the public who are still here, we really appreciate hearing what's on the list.
Housing's still number one, though, despite my comments.
We're good, I'll talk to you a little bit later. Rarely does the public turn up, so for those of you who have stuck this out, really, it's deeply appreciated, it makes us feel like we're not just up here in a vacuum.
And thank you to our folks from the press for sticking with us. I know sometimes it's not very remains. All right. Does anybody else have anything else? Thank you.
Questions, Karen?